The Royal Commission into violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of people with disability is now in session.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this, the fourth day of the hearing that commenced on Monday this week, hearing number 17.2 of the Royal Commission. I apologise for the lack of the real-time videoing of the proceedings yesterday. That was the result of some difficulties we had with starting in consequence of COVID-19. But I'm very pleased to say that today the live stream will resume and we hope that we shall have business as usual. We commence as always with the acknowledgement of country and I invite Commissioner Mason to make the acknowledgement of country.
Thank you, Chair. As a Nal'ada and Karani woman, I wish to pay my respects and acknowledge the First Nations people on the land on which the Royal Commission is sitting today. We acknowledge the Murrumbina people, the traditional custodians of the land on which Apuruna, the city of Hobart is now located. We recognise the Wurundjeri people of the Kulin nation where the city of Melbourne is now situated. We recognise Majin Brisbane. We recognise the country northern-south of the Brisbane River as the home of both the Turrbal and Jagorah nations whose land is now where the city of Brisbane is located. We also wish to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the various lands on which you all virtually appear from and any First Nations peoples who are participating in this hearing, especially women, mimmicaw and children with digital disability. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Mason. Ms Eastman, I understand that there's a tender to take place first up. Before that, is there another appearance for any party you can leave to appear?
Chair, not that I'm aware of.
All right, thank you.
I thought I might make some opening remarks first and then deal with attenders after making some opening remarks.
Very well.
Please. So Commissioners, today you will continue to hear from women about their experiences with violence, abuse in their families, domestic settings and sexual violence. Up on the screen is the content warning and as we've said each day, the evidence will cover matters that will be distressing and confronting. In fact, our first witness today, Libby Crawford, has asked us to have our tissues ready. In fact, this morning, our first witness will be Libby Crawford, who lives in Adelaide, but she's travelled to Hobart today to give her evidence in person. Ms Crawford pre-recorded some evidence with me in September last year and she will tell you about her life. Ms Crawford was born with some difficulties, including a double cleft palate and hair lip. As she grew older, she was diagnosed with an intellectual disability. Ms Crawford has experienced physical abuse as a child in her family. She was sexually abused when she was 12 and a resident at [BLEEP]. And Ms Crawford will tell you about her experiences of domestic and financial violence when she was married for some time and her life in a group home. After hearing from Ms Crawford, we'll then move to Brisbane and again, we have pre-recorded some evidence with Nikki and Nikki's mother. Nikki was sexually assaulted at a respite day centre operated by Anglicare Southern Queensland. Nikki and her mum will tell you about what happened when Nikki and her father notified Anglicare about the assault, reporting to the police and also Anglicare's response. We'll then take morning tea and after morning tea, you will hear from Caroline Cumming. She is the Service Manager, Community Aged and Disability for Anglicare Southern Queensland. The Royal Commission has asked Anglicare about its response to when Nikki's father reported the sexual assault. Ms Cumming has provided a detailed statement together with providing copies of Anglicare's policies and procedures and Ms Fraser will ask Ms Cumming some questions about the way Anglicare responded to the assault on Nikki. After morning tea, oh sorry, after Ms Cumming gives evidence, we'll take lunch. After lunch, we'll hear from a panel from Widder. Ms Fromada, who participated at the first part of the public hearing, will join the panel with Ms Hermans and Ms Moody. Ms Moody has been in the hearing room and following the proceedings during the course of the week. The panel from Women with Disability Australia, Widder, will draw together the themes that the Royal Commission has heard in our hearing in October and also during the course of this week. We'll discuss a wide range of issues and we want to understand from Widder their proposals about changes and what needs to be done for the future. And then finally today, we'll hear from Katie Coolas. She's the founder and CEO of Yellow Lady Bugs. Yellow Lady Bugs is an autistic-led non-government organisation with strong bridges to the community. Yellow Lady Bugs is dedicated to the happiness, success and celebration of autistic girls and women. The Lady Bugs are committed to being part of a growing conversation around specific challenges and support needs of autistic women and girls and individuals and they actively seek to address many of the challenges the autistic community faces, including barriers to diagnosis, lack of inclusion in school and employment and access to support services. Ms Coolas will be joined by Nikita. Nikita is a member of Yellow Lady Bugs and she will tell you about her experience of sexual abuse and that will conclude today's proceedings. So Chair, the material that we need to tender into evidence arising from yesterday's hearing, can I start first with the evidence for Christie Hill? You have an audio recording and a transcript of the recording. Could those two items be identified as exhibit 17.20.1 and 17.20.2? Not sure we can hear you, Chair.
Life continues to be complicated. The audio recording and the transcript of the audio recording will be admitted into evidence and they will become exhibit 17.20.1 and 17.20.2.
Next is the evidence for Brigitte and there's a video recording for Brigitte and a transcript of the video recording. If those items can be marked exhibit 20, sorry, 17.24.1 and 17.24.2.
Yes, the video recording and transcript of the video will be admitted into evidence and given the set of numbers which Ms Eastman has referred.
Then for Margaret Byrne, she provided a statement to the Royal Commission. If that could be marked as exhibit 17.19.1.
This Byrne's statement will be admitted into evidence and given that exhibit number.
And for Ali Robins, her statement was provided yesterday as part of the hearing and if that could be marked 17.25.1.
Yes, Ms Robins' statement will also be admitted into evidence and given that designation.
Thank you, Chair. Give me a moment, I'm going to run around the back of the hearing room and I'm going to join Ms Crawford now.
Yes, thank you.
So Chair, I hope you can see me now on the screen and we're joined in the hearing room with Ms Elizabeth Crawford.
Would you like to be Ms Crawford or Libby today?
Yes, me.
Libby. So we're joined by Libby, thank you.
Yes.
So I'm going to, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, Libby, if I may call you that, I want to thank you very much for coming all the way to Hobart to give your evidence today. We're very grateful to you for making that journey and being prepared to share your experiences with us. I'm sure you've been introduced to the Commissioners in the room, but I will just point out that in the hearing room with you in Hobart, Commissioners Bennett and Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner Mason. Commissioner Gelbel is joining the hearing from Melbourne and you will be able to see Commissioner Gelbel on the screen. And I am participating in the hearing from Sydney and hopefully you can see me on the screen as well. So thank you once again for coming to the Royal Commission and also for what you've already done for the purposes of this hearing. And I will now ask Ms Eastman to ask you some questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Libby, we're going to start with taking an oath. So you've got the Bible here with you, hand on the Bible. I'm going to read the oaths to you and at the end, please say yes or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence that you will give to the Royal Commission will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Oh, well.
Thank you. Well, Libby, welcome to the Royal Commission.
Thank you.
You live in Adelaide and you live in a group home in Adelaide? Yes. And you've recently moved into a new home, haven't you? When we spoke to you last year, you were living in a home with three men. They didn't talk and you were not very happy with stuff. And you had to go to hospital. And while you're in hospital, you took the opportunity of advocating for yourself to say you did not want to go back to that group home. And so where are you living now?
Um, let me think firstly is with ladder to what lies is I talk and and one thing I love to find which that's one of my passion.
Can I ask you, so the two ladies who you now live with, it sounds like a house full of craft.
Yeah.
So tell me about the crafts that you do.
Uh, I think what you're told makes I am a god here. And so it's all coming out, but if I'm told to do it, it makes me get my call.
What does that, what does the craft look like?
Um, it has look okay or come with cake. I use it carefully.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of sticky things. And then then you've got got a kind of um, tie for all it, so it's thick.
Yeah.
And when you but you look at where you want go, you mostly tie for off and you've got this um, pin thing and you've got this thick thing and then you're like, what you're putting in the thick thing. Um, thick thing is for like up thing, thing, one thing.
Okay, so it sounds like it's quite tricky to put the pins in the different places and to work around. Thank you for telling us about that. What is life in your current home like compared to before?
Um, it's okay for now. Um, my my thing and I was talking last last night. All I feel is that I live on my own with with I I go.
So that's your aim, isn't it? You just want to live by yourself?
Yeah.
Choose your own house?
Yeah.
Have the supports that you need?
Yeah.
And not feel that everybody's making the decision for you? Okay. So can I ask you, when we spoke last year and we talked about your life, we recorded that and everything you told me in that, at that time was true, wasn't it?
Yes.
So we might show the Royal Commissioners the recording that we did.
Okay.
And that was based on, just to introduce to everybody following, that was based on you had prepared some information for the Royal Commission, talking about your life.
Yeah.
And in the video, we'll talk about, well, people can hear us talk about when you were a child and there were some problems with your mum.
Yeah.
And that was not a good time for you in terms of how she treated you. Then you moved into a particular place, which was for children with disability in Adelaide.
Yeah.
And you lived there for a while.
Yeah.
And when you're about 12 there, you were sexually abused.
Yes.
And you told your sister about that.
Yes.
And I think we'll hear you saying shortly that you weren't sure, your sister and I, you weren't sure, should we tell mum and dad because they were a bit rocky at the time as well? Yeah. Then as you grew up, you've lived in different places and I think you say you're going to tell the Royal Commissioners that you fell into the wrong crowd for a while. Is that right? And that gave you some fairly good life experience in terms of dealing with different people and sort of seeing a side of life that can be really hard.
Yeah.
And you've had a few boyfriends in your time.
Yes.
And you did get married.
Yes.
And I think you've got to tell us about what happened. He took, he took the wedding present and ran off with the money.
Yes.
And then that that marriage wasn't so good for you.
Yeah.
And then you've moved into different places as well. And then after that, I might ask you some questions about the work that you're doing as an advocate and you've become a very strong advocate in South Australia. And the Royal Commission has seen, I think, one of your videos when we looked at the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities.
Yeah.
So our voice essay participated in that hearing, probably with some of your friends, Rachel.
Yeah.
And I'm going to ask you about being an advocate and what you think needs to change for women and girls.
Okay.
I know that for you, being able to tell the Royal Commission how important it is for women and girls to be treated with respect, with dignity, that you are human beings, but you also, as women with disability, want to love and be loved and you want to have good relationships. So can we talk about that too?
Yeah.
All right, so let's watch the recording that we did together last year.
Next.
And get your tissues out, you sit down.
Can I ask you some questions about your mum? Do you want to talk about her?
Yeah.
So she was diagnosed with bipolar and she didn't cope very well when you were little, is that right?
Yeah.
And you remember that there were times when mum had to go to hospital?
Yeah.
And you remember that your mum sometimes abused you?
Yeah.
Physically abused you when you were, when you, when she was unwell, is that right?
I know.
Quite a lot?
Yeah.
And so when you think about when you were a little kid, you can remember being punched, kicked and having your hair pulled?
Yeah.
And you understand because of this, you went to live at [BLEEP]?
Yeah.
And that was a school and a centre?
Yeah.
Do you want to talk about what you remember about living at [BLEEP] school?
Yes. Um, not I mean, but when I was 12, it's all I was like, my um, my nun.
Yeah.
So I went home and I told my sister.
So you told your, so you told your sister that you'd been raped by somebody at the centre?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And and um, we are free with typical because mum was like well.
Yeah.
And so when I was acting, I was like well at all, right? And then I was person with a lying, had my my nun. She was mine, that's made it mine. And she had a fine girl, right? So I was her friend here. Then mum can make me up. And then mum asked me and my aunt. And so I was living free with [BLEEP]. Like my sister for thing. And I woke up my aunt and when dad come on mum's room, mum and dad come to my room, I had more thing thing, right? And so so um, so I'm saying that man is not my my thing. It makes it thing it, right? And I told them who it was.
So can I just ask you, so you told, so when you first spoke to your sister about it, the two of you decided not to tell mum or dad because they were having a rocky time as well?
Yeah.
So you and your sister kept that as a secret, you didn't tell anyone?
No, none.
But then I think either you or your sister told your mum a number of years later.
Hmm.
And the people, as you say, from community welfare came.
Yeah.
And after you had that meeting with the welfare, what happened next? Did any action happen? Did anybody take this matter further?
No.
Did anyone offer, did anyone offer to help you or support you in any way?
Um, let me think, I went to some um, some hospital.
Yes.
And there was some people there put for me a three twos summon, um, like that, are you? That six thing, nine thing, no one take it more.
No one took it further?
No.
But eventually you sort of ended up in a unit of your own and you lived by yourself. And I think you, you say yourself, you got involved with the wrong people.
Yeah.
Now, what do you want to tell the Royal Commission, if anything, about this part, this time in your life when you got involved with the wrong people? What happened?
Well, I don't know, it was my people, right? I feel most earth in my heart, right? And I hate you, you, right? And I turn back mum's phone, then I have my in my words, right? And then I had more thing, then I think I and then that thing and thing is when it's there, when in my house, you, you? And then you went in jail.
He went in jail?
Yeah.
So.
He went in jail, but in me my mom, right? So then I think, you know what's going on, right? And my nun knew to me it has my name, right? Then I say saying, yeah, my name, but well, somewhere else. But then I think I, right? Then someone tell me um, that thousand thirty eight, right? So I had talked this many things till the end where I was never but and then she said, Ben, I'm pizza of big more thing, right? And I think that's him.
That team.
Yeah.
So Libby, can I ask you, when, when you had this relationship and this boyfriend?
Yeah.
What, what experience had you had or what did you know about being in a relationship and having a boyfriend? Do you not, did you know, well, how should the boyfriend treat me? Or what should, what treatment should I say that's not good enough? Or what, what did you know about that?
I didn't know what love is.
You didn't know what love was?
Right, I I didn't know what what I said was, um, I felt my finger, uh, like that.
Did anybody teach you about consent as you were growing up and understanding what consent to having a sexual relationship would be?
Um, um, as I was growing up, my sister had talked to me when I was back. But and like then so my sister, I in this one, what in a this one say? No, so I think, and yeah.
And when you were growing, growing up and during this difficult time, did you want to have boyfriends?
Um, I want the one I like.
Yeah.
Mum, it's my thing.
Yeah. And did you, did you think about what sort of, if you want, if you had boyfriends, what type of boyfriends you liked and what, how you wanted the boyfriends to treat you?
Then I didn't know what boyfriend was, how about so pick me? But I've done that and as I'm finding out, as now, I know what's what say more add, what man say more add. And Karen and I and Nal'ada come gang sleep. They are the man me. Let me help me say. Things that I'm in more things and I'm that's what they say. That time thing.
Cause you, you did meet someone and you got married, didn't you?
Yeah.
And.
Yeah.
That marriage has ended now, but when you were in that marriage, you did experience some domestic violence.
Yeah.
Now, I, it's very hard, I know, to talk about. When you've had domestic violence in your life.
Yeah.
How, what would you like to tell the Royal Commission about that period of life when you were married and you had that experience of domestic violence?
Well. I'm sorry, I was married, they, I, I, which I thought enough me. So we got married and my uncle, um, and saying. Saying me as my eight more I'm waiting for saying. Yeah, then guy takes it through us on a wedding day.
Right.
And then, um, then it's when it on himself. Um, wait, not wait, I said, wait, I can go. But so I guess so, yeah. I, 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 I went to my icon, what about me? But insane, insane, what my eh? I said, oh man, I'm no one, right? So anyway, it must be me, me, that's the more than house. Right, I am making so for work. Right, I want the class saying, oh, he's annoying, it was. Right, I said, what? They said, me, but and then. Then it got angry.
He got it, why did he get angry?
Because I know they're true. Right, and so now, then it, then it quits, it think money. Right, so my east guy, I was in bed. He gave my arms and he taught me hey. And, and then my best friend said, right, you're what my tall talks. I say yes, man, that much of my, right, and. Thing, every time I talk, talk, um, eh. My laugh at me.
Every time?
Every time. I told my laugh at me.
So what's your attitude now to the cops?
Well. That.
Do you trust them?
Anyway, I'm not saying what they know.
Hmm.
But one thing I don't trust them at all. Um, I don't know what someone's thinking about. Um, yeah.
All right, so you, you got out of that marriage, but you went to live in supported, uh, supportive residential facility in Adelaide and that wasn't a particularly happy place for you?
No.
And you had a, you met a boyfriend when you were there? And he sort of came to visit you in your room? But you both got in trouble, didn't you?
Yeah.
And you were told off in front of everybody in the house that you shouldn't be together, even if it was your boyfriend. Is that what happened? And you were kicked out of that place?
Yeah.
Because you were told it was unacceptable to have a boyfriend?
Yeah.
So Libby, from what you've told us today, you are a survivor.
Yeah.
Of family violence as a child?
Yeah.
As a teenager? And as an adult? In some of the very important relationships in your life? With your parents, with your boyfriend and husband. Looking back at your experience. What needs to change so that what happened to you doesn't happen to other people?
Yeah. More is really a woman, right? It was like six thing eh, right? So much, make us better, my phone, right? That's a lot. I went there, that's a lot, so they. They are moves. And, um, and, and thanks, many people, they expect my thing, I'm fine. My guys, I know how it feels.
And what about relationships? Do you still think that having those, a close, personal or intimate family relationship is important in your life and what would you like to happen?
Well, um. I think a boyfriend. That means eh, I that's mixing for our mum thing. My stuff I said my asthma.
For you.
I ain't for asthma. My thing is, is small talk.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I got in the. Moving by cheaper.
Hmm.
And thing is to money. I got smoke, my mix, my face and, you know?
Hmm.
Uh. Yeah.
Is there anything else you would like to say to the commissioners today?
Um, I hope and I think so. That there's more women and more ways. I'm still them, so I figure five. And I hope. They get what they deserve.
Thank you, Libby, how do you feel watching that again? It's a while since we talked to each other.
Yeah. It's quite a while. I was taken in my zone when I'm what's eh, and yeah, it. Move. I will slowly. Bit. Five, three, and then same two. And. And. Yeah.
Thank you for sharing the story. A lot's happened to you in your life.
Yeah, and I see, I, I, I last year that I'm serious more.
Yep. You're a survivor.
Um, maybe that's normal people, but since I know what I did. So well, so that's my face in sadness.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah. But I get it.
You did it. And being an advocate, this is something, it's a passion for you now, isn't it?
Yes.
And you want to be a strong advocate for women?
Yeah.
And part of telling your story to the Royal Commission is to, as you said, right at the end, you pray to God that other women can come and tell their stories. And if they are in trouble in their families or with their boyfriends or their husbands, they should be able to ask for help.
Yeah.
And something should be done.
Yes, so that's it, but I hope. In what sense in woman? But smiling or whoever. That's what get what they deserve.
And getting what they deserve means justice, doesn't it? I think they told me that before.
No, so much justice.
Nothing but justice.
Man, in my mind. Yes, well, I, all thing, thing, something, love. Men in sales for love.
Maybe not, maybe not death row.
No, no, no.
But in jail for life.
Like eh.
Yeah.
Uh, there.
But struck, but I think it's a strong punishment, isn't it?
Yeah, it's no way to fall.
And that a strong punishment is the community saying, the treatment of women, treatment of women with disability who experience violence and abuse in their families or sexual abuse, you need a strong punishment. So the community says this is not right.
No.
But probably not death row. Okay, Libby, thank you so much for talking to us.
My.
Uh, the commissioners might have some questions for you, they may not. Uh, but we have very much appreciated the time you've spent with us to tell us about your life and sharing a lot of personal family information with us, so thank you very much.
It's my, I know, me here.
I'm glad to hear too. Okay.
It's my same mate you first.
Libby, thank you very much, I, I, I will ask if it's okay with you, I'll ask Commissioner Galbally if she has any questions or anything that she would like to say to you.
Okay.
Um, it's nice to see you again, Libby.
Yes, it's very nice seeing you eh.
I would like to just thank you so much, um, for your appearance today. And, and just to ask you, would you add to your list that the police ought to take you seriously and not laugh at you, they should take you very seriously?
Let me say, it's not good thing I've that, if we deal with this, that's what they say, God bless me.
And do you think the police didn't take you seriously because you were disabled? Do you think that's why?
I think that took me some reason. Or my say, um, I'm woman, but I don't say, I thought, no. Um, took me, I'm like six main key, you know?
Yeah. Good luck with your advocacy to get a, a living situation that you would like to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Galbally. I'll ask Commissioner Bennett first and then Commissioner Mason if they would like to ask you any questions or to say anything to you, perhaps first Commissioner Bennett.
Thank you, Libby, um, it was very powerful to hear what you had to say today. Um, violence against women in our community is a terrible, terrible indictment on our community. Um, and it's clear that there is such a shortage of services for women experiencing domestic violence. But we are hearing that there is very little for women with disability.
Hmm.
That, um, understanding needs and able to work with them. And it's very heartening to hear that women like you are standing in to fill that gap, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Commissioner Mason, is there anything you would like to ask Libby or say to Libby?
Yes, thank you, Chair, just, just had one question for Libby and thank you so much for your evidence today, um, and to putting your experiences on the record of the Royal Commission. Um, you had a, you've got a sister who has supported you, um, all of your life. Um, it sounds like you're now being that sister to women with disabilities in Adelaide.
Yeah.
How important it is, do you feel, uh, that women with disabilities talk to younger women with disabilities about safety? About these stories of violence and abuse and how they can be safe? Um, that they should speak up? And, um, can you explain to me how important that is to you? That as a woman with disability, that you're doing that because it sounds like that wasn't given to you when you were growing up and now you're giving that to, uh, young women? Can you tell me a bit about how that, um, impacts you?
Um. I, it's. Done, no way you sport and like short smell. New side. They like animals. They like a cat, they're not cold, they are two things. Right, if you got head. I mean, you got hat, that makes real clear thing. And I'm playing all women, I'm playing. Some people got more with names. Like that, I'm woman.
Hmm, yes, you're saying that they are women, they're human, they're not animals, they're not a cat or a dog and they're worthy.
Yeah.
Human beings and they are worthy. Thank you, thank you so much, Libby, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason, Libby, I too would like to thank you, uh, very much. We know that it's not easy to, uh, come to the commission and tell us, uh, your own experiences throughout your life of, of family violence, but you have done that today and you did that in the interview that we saw, that we watched and listened to very, very carefully. One of the things you said was that you would like to encourage more women to come forward and tell their stories. By doing that today yourself, I'm sure you have encouraged more women to come forward to the Royal Commission and elsewhere and tell us their own stories of, of family violence, the stories that they've experienced. So thank you again for coming to us and giving evidence. We very much appreciate the help and contribution, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, I'll also mention that, um, we were joined in the hearing room today when Libby's giving her evidence by Ziggy.
Yeah.
And she, Ziggy's been with us, so, um, just to acknowledge Ziggy's presence as well. It's been helpful, hasn't it, Libby, to have Ziggy?
Yeah.
Uh, Chair, I'm going to depart from the program and perhaps ask for a five to 10 minute, um, break before we move to Brisbane for our next, um, witness, thank you.
All right, well, we'll resume at, uh, eleven o'clock over time, ten o'clock, uh, Brisbane time.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session. Yes, uh, Ms Frazer. Yes, uh, Ms Fraser, I think there may now be um an empirics to be announced. Is that correct?
And uh in the Brisbane Hearing Room are the legal representatives of Anglicare, if it's now an appropriate time for them to announce their appearance.
Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners Andrea Tillis QC, I am instructed by Minta Ellison and as Ms Fraser indicated, I appear on behalf of Anglicare Southern Queensland.
Yes, thank you very much. Yes, Ms Fraser.
Thank you, Chair. We will now hear from Nikki and Nikki's mum. This is a pseudonym and the full names of Nikki and Nikki's mum are known to the Royal Commission. I would like content warning number one to be now be placed on the screen. If the evidence that you're about to hear raises concerns for you, please contact one eight hundred RESPECT on one eight zero zero seven three seven seven three two. The Blue Knot Counseling and Referral Service on one eight hundred four two one four six eight. Lifeline on thirteen eleven fourteen or Beyond Blue on one three hundred two two four six three six. Nikki was sexually assaulted at a respite centre of Anglicare Southern Queensland in two thousand and eighteen. Nikki and Nikki's mum pre-recorded their evidence with Miss Eastman on sixth August two thousand and twenty one. The document identifier for the pre-recorded evidence of Nikki and her mum is document number IND zero one four six dot zero 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 one dot zero 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 one. I would ask that that recording now be played.
Can I ask you to tell the Royal Commission uh about yourself?
I basically went from right through from preschool to year twelve and then I went straight into this day respite.
What was it like going to school? Did you like going to school?
I loved it because I had nice friends and all that, yeah.
And what did you wanna do after you left school?
Um, basically work with mum and dad.
Yeah, and so when you're talking about going to respite, what can you tell us about respite?
It was just like a day, day respite centre, basically we do activities and go on outings and all that.
And what sorts of things do you like doing at respite and just generally when you're hanging out?
Well, I love doing dom and art and that, yeah. And then have a mum and dad with the. And listening to my music and that.
What music do you like?
Country music.
Really?
Yeah.
Nikki, you live with a disability. Do you wanna tell the Royal Commission about your disability?
Uh, it's a big one. Smith-Begana Syndrome.
What's that?
Uh, it's a chromosome gene where part of number seventeen is missing and I get the shakes and and all that really badly. Yeah. So I'm on medication for it.
And um and how does your disability affect your day to day life?
Um, no, it doesn't affect me at all, really. I just live with it. Hmm.
Now, um, I want to ask you now about something that happened back in September twenty eighteen. And I know it's a hard thing to talk about.
Yep.
And so you you've prepared a statement for the Royal Commission and do you wanna read the statement?
Yes, I do. I was sexually assaulted at the respite day centre in Queensland. The perpetrator was another client of this service who was new to the area. I told my dad about it a couple of days later because I was still processing it and was had a meeting with the centre the next Monday. We told the centre about it, the violence, and then we told the local police. The police were really helpful, down to earth, explained things well and believed me peacefully. Specifically, oh specifically. The Child Protection Investigation Unit. The police did a video interview recording with me and took the recording of me walking from the respite centre to outside where the assault happened. My mum and dad and my GP all believed me too. My GP did lots of tests to make sure I was safe and healthy. I started seeing a nice councillor at Laurel Place, which was suggested straight away by the police. Some of the workers from the day respite were helpful, believed me and wrote down those happen. Some other workers didn't believe me and kept trying to ask me for information about the court case. There was, they were begging to know what happened when they kept asking the me about what happened. It made me feel unsafe and at the centre. One of them tried to tell me it didn't happen at all. I told them it wasn't their business. The DPP were really helpful. I went and sat with them in the city. They showed me around the courthouse and the room that I was gonna be in if I had to talk to the judge and the lawyers. He changed his mind lots of times in the court and changed his plea from guilty to not guilty. More security cameras at the respite centre to make people feel safer. Don't keep asking about what happened. Believe people when they say something has happened. More training for carers and manage for the respite service about responding to sexual assaults.
Hmm. Nikki, thanks for reading that and um and I know that's a hard thing to talk about and to tell the Royal Commission.
Hmm.
But thank you very much for sharing that experience. Um, are you okay if I ask you a few questions?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
And one of the things you just mentioned at the end is, you said, don't keep asking about what happened. Believe people when they say something has happened.
Yeah.
And that's an outcome that you'd like to see.
Yes.
And for you, the people who are closest to you believed you.
Yes. Hmm.
And when they believed you, that made you feel safe?
It did, yep.
It made it okay to tell somebody what had happened?
Yep. Hmm.
And that was a bit different to the workers who didn't believe you?
Yeah.
So when they didn't believe you, you said it made you feel unsafe at the centre?
It did, yeah.
Why, why did that make you feel unsafe?
Because I just, they weren't even around at the time when it happened.
One of them tried to tell you it didn't happen at all. How did that make you feel?
Oh, I was fuming at the time.
You've also said as one of your suggestions, more training for the carers and managers of respite services in responding to sexual assaults.
Yep.
So as one of the parts of training is about when you hear a person tell you that they've been assaulted.
Hmm.
That you believe them.
Yeah.
And support them.
Yep.
And that's your other point about having more security cameras at the centres to make people feel safer.
Exactly, yeah.
There were some cameras at the centre, weren't there?
There was only one.
One, but it didn't, it didn't cover the area where the assault.
And there were security cameras over the hospital as well. And it didn't basically get to where it was happening. Hmm.
I also wanted to ask you, uh, if it's okay, and just let me know, is the police suggested going to see um a councillor at Laurel Place?
Yes.
And that was straight away?
Hmm.
And before that, you'd never had to see a councillor at all?
No, no.
So this is a pretty new thing.
It is.
And what what was your experience like? What was it like when you saw the councillor? Did you find that helpful?
It did, yes, it did, yeah. It did, yeah.
And so one of the reasons you wanted to come and talk to the Royal Commission today was that telling them about what happened to you might help other people feel that they can tell.
The Royal Commission.
And they can trust people to say, this is what happened to me.
Exactly, yeah.
They don't have to keep it a secret.
No.
And they don't have to be ashamed.
No, they don't, okay? And they've even got their own voice to speak up about it.
And what's it like to have your own voice to speak up about it? How important is that?
Feels great to speak up and that, yeah.
Nikki's experience has also had an effect on the family and you've watched how uh people have responded to Nikki and the impact on Nikki of these events that go back to September twenty eighteen, is that right?
Yes.
So can I ask you a little bit about your daughter? I've asked her to give a description of what she's like and she's very modest, other than disclosing side of things. But can you tell us about Nikki um growing up and and um a little bit about your family?
She's very social, so she does enjoy, was until this happened, going to um a a centre where she can mix with other people, be, you know, doing her own thing to to a certain degree, as much as possible in a small place.
Yep. So can I um now ask you some questions about what occurred in September twenty eighteen? So you were away at the time and uh you became aware that Nikki had reported the assault to uh your husband?
Yeah, the actual, the actual day that this all happened, I was still here, but came home and. Sorry, she came home and um didn't say anything about it. I went away the next day and it wasn't for a, till a few days later that it got and when she had to think about going back to the centre the next week, that it all came out and she told her father she'd obviously been stressing about it. Um, and he rang me straight away, we talked about it over the phone and so on. Um, yeah. So, yeah, so I was away when she disclosed, yes.
So the the first thing that happened was then uh a meeting with the staff at the respite centre.
Yes.
And you had the impression that they didn't really know what to do?
Yes, I did.
And um I think you said you felt like they had their head in the sand. It was a bit easier for it just to go away rather than to have to do something about it, is that right?
Uh, generally that picture, yeah. I think the immediate, the staff that my husband saw at the time, well, they had to ring up and find out what to do. Um, and the head of the organisation, yeah, from a bigger centre, said, oh, that's a police matter. And um, yeah.
So who, so who reported the matter to the police? Was that that your husband or someone from the respite centre?
Yes.
So your husband?
Yes.
And then uh the police came to your home? And I think Nikki said that she did talk to the police, is that right?
To the local police, yes.
The local police. Then there was a referral to the Child Protection Unit.
Yes.
And uh and in terms of the, that experience with the police and specifically the Child Protection Unit, um, what's your reflection on that? What was that experience like?
Um, well, we found them very helpful and very good at um guiding. I've done it again, sorry.
It's okay.
Uh, guiding our daughter and um, yeah, they, because they are trained in that area, we thought they were much better. I agree with you.
And so Nikki's just said that the police made the suggestion about getting some counselling right at the the outset. And um and what's, what did you observe about that? What did you see about that? How did that have an impact on Nikki?
Um, I think it did help a process and to get the anger out.
So uh are we right in understanding that the police undertook an investigation and that included uh taking a a video recorded interview for Nikki? And also, as I think you should say in the statement, looking at CCTV footage? And the matter then progressed to the perpetrator being charged?
Yes.
And then the matter then proceeded to a court proceeding, is that right?
Yes.
And you say the perpetrator was charged with rape and carnal knowledge of a person with an impairment of the mind. That's what the police told you the charge was?
Yes, um, and he pled guilty to the second.
Second charge.
Charges.
How's things been for the family and what you've seen for for Nikki since he's been sentenced and he is no longer in a position of of being in the town or having to run into him?
Uh, it was like a cloud lifted that now that there was no chance of him running into him or being around the community and that he was punished for the crime that he committed. It's um, yeah, it's quite a weight on his shoulders.
Now, can I ask you some questions about the respite centre? Uh, I think you've said in your statement, you think that there needs to be some training for the staff at the centre uh to better respond to these issues. But also, as I understand it, to ensure that it doesn't happen in the first place. It's not simply a matter of let it happen and then let's respond to it. But having some clearer safeguards to uh ensure that Nikki and others who go to the respite centre can go there knowing that they're feeling safe and that there's not the risk that they'll be subject to any violence or abuse, is that right?
Yes, yeah, I believe so. I, there should be some sort of training towards any scenario that can can happen when dealing with vulnerable people.
Did, were you, before Nikki went to that respite centre, did you have any concerns about what her safety and her welfare might be at the centre?
No, but that was a long time ago. It was eighteen, eighteen years ago, we worked out that she first became involved with the centre, which was set up to help the members of the community. Um, and she was happy to go and everything seemed to be running well and went along for a long time and um and then uh it changed. Uh, what's the word? Um. It came under the umbrella of a very big organisation a few years ago, probably a couple of years ago before, a couple of years before this incident at the most. And things changed, but my, I think that a big organisation that size should have in place training for um all staff.
We've also flagged um having better policies so that people of concern, as you say, somebody who may have a criminal history or something concerning in their history, but they're screened before they come to work at a centre like the respite centre, is that right?
Yes, yes, definitely.
What um support, if anything, did the respite centre provide to Nikki or to the family generally?
None. Absolutely.
Was there any, any offer of support?
No, the only um thing that happened was that two long-term workers who'd known her since she first went there were, let us know that they were absolutely mortified. But that's about all, that we couldn't really have a conversation about it, that was at the centre. So that was all that was said. There was nothing from anyone who was in charge of the centre or nothing from the overriding um organisation until an audit happened um last year. And that's when I voiced, well, we voiced our concerns about it, about that. And I got a letter afterwards, of kind of apology, but.
When you say kind of apology, what, did you consider it to be an apology?
Um, hmm, I I didn't feel it. It really, it was on paper, but it didn't feel very um genuine, I guess is the word.
Did any, before you got that letter, did anyone contact you to say, would you like an apology? And if so, what would you like us to say in the apology?
Not at all, not. Not at all, not at all.
Has there been any offer of assistance to support Nikki in terms of counselling or support the family at all?
No, not at all.
Has there been any steps taken to have any other type of redress? And I think you've mentioned in your statement that the victim's support unit has been very good in assisting with some applications. So there's a process on foot at the moment, is that right?
Yes, but that's mainly getting compensation for our expenses and that sort of thing, that's, that paperwork sort of side of it. But as the organisation itself, no, nothing. The only thing that's happened since this letter, I've actually had a chance to meet the lady who wrote the letter recently, and I told her that I would like to have a meeting with someone to find out if things have been put in place or if pol, what policy is, and I have yet heard nothing, so.
Nothing.
Wait and see if anything happens, but I mean, that's only recently, I have to say. But I intend to.
So sort of reflecting back on these events, what would you like to share with the Royal Commission about a way forward?
There probably needs to be some sort of checks and balances in the hierarchy of the, of the organisation that's providing the care, accountability and training for the staff who are looking after the vulnerable people with disabilities or aged or whatever it is.
Can I thank both of you so much for sharing these experiences with the Royal Commission? And for the suggestions that you've made about change? And Nikki, as you said, having a voice to be able to speak up and tell people what occurred.
Yes, Miss Fraser.
Thank you, Chair. I understand that we will now break for morning tea.
All right. What time should we resume? Should we resume at twelve noon Hobart time, eleven AM Brisbane time?
Chair, I'm in your hands. From my perspective, it's not necessary that we have that amount of break, but I'm in your hands.
Well, the programme that I provided with suggests that Miss Cumming will commence her evidence at twelve noon. So if, this will allow us to maintain that, so let's come back then at twelve noon Hobart time, eleven AM.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session. Yes, Miss Fraser.
Thank you, Chair. I'm joined in the Brisbane Hearing Room by Miss Caroline Cumming of Angler Care. I would ask that the oath be administered to Miss Cumming now. I will read you the oath. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole and nothing but the truth?
I do, thank you.
Thank you, Miss Cumming. Miss Cumming, you've given a statement?
Sorry, Miss Cumming, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission. I'd just like to indicate where all the commissioners are so that you are aware of it. I appreciate that you're in the Brisbane Hearing Room. We have Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner Mason in the Hobart Hearing Room. And we have Commissioner Galberly participating in the hearing from Melbourne. I'm participating in the hearing from the Sydney Hearing Room. And as you know, Miss Fraser, who was about to ask you some questions, is in the Brisbane Hearing Room as well. And I will now ask Miss Fraser to ask you some questions, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Miss Cumming, you have given a statement to this Royal Commission?
Yes.
And the statement is dated the eighteenth of February two thousand and twenty-two?
Yes.
And you gave the statement in response to a notice to give information or a statement in writing dated thirty-one January two thousand and twenty-two?
Yes, that's correct.
Commissioners, you will find Miss Cumming's statement is document S T A T dot zero five zero seven dot zero 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 one dot zero 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 one. And it is found at tab three in tender bundle B. Miss Cumming, you are employed by Angler Care as the Service Manager, Community, Aged and Disability for Brisbane North Region?
Yes.
And you have held this role since March of two thousand and nineteen?
Yes.
The Royal Commission has just heard the evidence of Nikki and Nikki's mum. And you were present during the time that that evidence was played, weren't you?
I was.
Angler Care provided services to Nikki from August two thousand and sixteen, didn't they?
Yes.
And those services were for, on average, three days per week?
Yes.
And during that time, Nikki would participate in a range of activities?
Correct.
Miss Cumming, on the seventeenth of September two thousand and eighteen, Nikki and her father met with Angler Care staff to report that Nikki had been sexually assaulted, didn't they?
They did, yes.
And you agree that a report of sexual assault at that time should have been addressed under Angler Care's Incident Management Procedure and Harm Prevention and Response for Adults with Disability Procedure?
Yes, it should have.
And you have a copy of that procedure with you for your reference at tab eleven of volume one of the tender bundle? And Commissioners, that is document A S Q five zero zero five dot zero 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 one dot one one nine. And to repeat, that's tab eleven of tender bundle B. Miss Cumming, I won't ask you to look at that document just yet. You were familiar with that procedure and what is required under that procedure?
At the time, I wasn't aware of that procedure.
Are you now aware of that procedure?
I am now aware.
And you would accept, wouldn't you, that in relation to Nikki's assault and Angler Care's subsequent response, that the procedure was not followed in a number of respects?
Yes.
Could I ask you to refer briefly to paragraph fifty-eight of your statement? I'll give you a moment. That's on page thirteen of the document.
I've got that now.
You'll see there that it records service manager directed staff to refer the matter to police in accordance with the Incident Management Procedure. You can see that?
Yes.
But that isn't what happened, is it?
No, the, the service manager told the staff to get the parents to call the police.
Yes, so the service manager directed staff to tell Nikki's father to report to police.
Yes.
You say at paragraph sixty-one of your statement that it was Angler Care's practice to recommend that clients or their families report to police. But you accept, don't you, that that is inconsistent with the procedures that were in place at the time?
I do, yes.
Specifically, it's inconsistent with the Harm Prevention and Response for Adults with Disability Procedure. Could I ask you to turn to the document at tab twelve of your tender bundle? Commissioners, tab twelve at tender bundle B. The document is called Quality Indicators Report, August to October two thousand and eighteen.
Yes.
Miss Cumming, can you tell me who prepares this report?
I believe it's someone from Governance, Risk and Assurance.
And where, where does this report go to?
To the Community Services, no, the Community Care Governance Committee.
So is this a document that is prepared for the purpose of compliance?
I think so, I'm not sure, it's.
Could I ask you to turn to page thirty-six of that document? And you'll see there's a table there.
Yes.
The second entry to the table has a date eleven September two thousand and eighteen. And you accept, don't you, that while Nikki's and her father reported the incident on the seventeenth of September, the incident ultimately occurred on the eleventh of September two thousand and eighteen? And the reference [bleep] is the centre in which the assault occurred?
Yes, it is.
So we can see there in the second column from the right, that there's a number of notations made there, including as the second last notation, incident reported to police.
Oh, yes.
But it is not clear on that document, is it, that the incident was ultimately reported to police by the parents?
No, it's not.
Angler Care's formal documented procedures, such as the document that we referred to earlier, the Harm Prevention and Response for Adults with Disability Procedure, has that document been amended in any way to provide that families now report incidents to police?
No, not to my knowledge.
So it continues to be the responsibility of Angler Care?
It does.
You record at paragraph seventy-one of your statement that Angler Care staff recommended to Nikki and Nikki's family that they seek an appointment with Nikki's GP as soon as possible?
Yes.
And you then go on to say the reason why that recommendation was made by Angler Care? Miss Cumming, it's not correct, is it, that the recommendation to attend the GP was one made by Angler Care?
Our Lifestyle Lead at the time did recommend that they see the GP and I followed up with her to make sure it was for those reasons.
Okay.
The police did as well.
So can I ask you to turn to paragraph seventy-seven of your statement?
Yes.
And you see there, it reads, it appears from a dated note on seventeen September and confirmed by the Lifestyle Lead that the detective, who subsequently spoke with Nikki's dad, also advised Nikki to take her to the GP.
Yes.
Miss Cumming, could I ask you to have a look at document number two, sorry, document at tab twenty-three of the tender bundle?
Yes, I've got that.
Just going back a moment, you mentioned to me earlier that Angler Care recommended in the first instance that Nikki's be taken to the GP. Could you be mistaken with respect to that recollection at all?
I could be, I wasn't there at the time and it was what was reported to me later on.
And specifically, if we have a look at this document, which is at tab twenty-three, we see there that it is a progress note dated seventeen September from the Lifestyle Lead that talks about a phone call between Nikki's dad and the Progress Lead, and it records there, he was also advised to take Nikki to the GP for checkup and to be tested for any sexually transmitted diseases.
Yes.
Miss Cumming, do you accept that the only document that Angler Care has produced to this Royal Commission that relates to an ultimate referral to the GP is this document?
Yes.
And you would accept, wouldn't you, that based on this document, it appears that it was the police who ultimately referred Nikki to the GP?
Yes.
And that there's no other, sorry, I cut you off there?
Sorry, yeah, no, it, it does.
And you would accept that there is no other supporting documentation that supports the suggestion that Angler Care also made that recommendation?
Yes.
The procedure that we referred to earlier, the Harm Prevention and Response for Adults with Disability Procedure, provides that if a victim has experienced sexual assault, that with the victim's consent, they should be referred to the nearest sexual, acute sexual service for the purpose of initial counselling and medical examination. Miss Cumming, that didn't occur in this instance, did it?
No.
The document also records, oh, sorry, if we could turn to your statement, paragraph seventy-nine, your statement there records the Angler Care Incident Management Procedure does not refer to post-incident supports other than those referred to in a previous paragraph?
Yes.
Miss Cumming, the statement that's recorded there at paragraph seventy-nine is not correct, is it?
For the Incident Management Procedure?
Yes. I can take you specifically to page twelve of that procedure. At item fifteen, and we see it provides for follow-up and support to client and parent care.
Absolutely, yes.
Yes. And we see there that the first bullet point is to provide or arrange for additional support, follow-up or debriefing for the adult with a disability and/or their parent carer. So accepting that the statement says that there was no requirement, that paragraph there would indicate there was, and that didn't occur in this instance, did it?
No.
Miss Cumming, it's the case, isn't it, that prior to July twenty twenty, Angler Care didn't provide any follow-up to Nikki or her parents, did they?
No.
Between the time, sorry, it was not actually until there was an NDIS audit in July of twenty twenty that Angler Care ultimately identified that that follow-up hadn't been provided to Nikki or her family, wasn't it?
That's correct, yes.
And there was then subsequently a letter sent by you on the twentieth of July twenty twenty?
Yes.
Almost two years after the incident. And a copy of that letter, Commissioners, appears at tab forty-four of tender bundle B. Miss Cumming, you had a meeting with Nikki's mother on the thirty-first of October twenty twenty-one?
I think it was earlier in October, but yes.
If we have a look at, sorry, twentieth of October, my apologies.
Yes, yes.
If we have a look at the document at tab thirty-one of the tender bundle, Commissioners, for your reference, you accept, Miss Cumming, that that's a note of your meeting with Nikki's mum?
Yes.
And you have noted in that file note from that meeting that an apology for the incident was extended by you to Nikki's mum?
Yes.
Before you made the apology, did you ask Nikki or Nikki's mum what they were ultimately, what they would consider to be an appropriate apology?
No, I didn't.
Miss Cumming, just a couple of final questions. Has Angler Care considered providing Nikki with any form of redress?
Not to my knowledge.
Is this something that Anglicare would consider?
I would think so. As part of this process, we're learning quite a bit and I can take it to our executive.
Thank you, Ms. Cummings.
Yeah.
Nothing further, Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Cummings, when we go to the document behind tab forty four, what were you intending to apologise for?
Unfortunately, it was an apology for me taking so long to provide an outcome to the investigation.
Given Francis today, there were a lot more things to apologise for, wasn't there?
There are.
And has an apology been extended in respect of the other failings by Anglicare to which you have agreed today?
I haven't yet. I was going to provide an apology here and we would follow up with the family.
Why has it taken so long? We're now at the end of March two thousand and twenty two.
It's going through this process, we have been able to identify a lot of gaps with how we have managed this particular assault incident.
Yes. When did you identify the gaps?
We started with looking through for the statement and then in the last couple of weeks, doing even a deeper dive with the lawyers in preparation.
Do I gather from that answer that the process of trying to identify where gaps were in the procedures for dealing with this particular case, that procedure that you followed was prompted by the statements that were produced by Nikki and Nikki's mum for the purposes of this year?
Yes, there were some some gaps identified with our incident and complaint management and investigation through a Deloitte review from two thousand and nineteen and then a follow-up in twenty twenty one. And our executive have started that process of improving that area of Anglicare.
By the time you wrote the letter of the twentieth of July, and I'll come back to the form of the letter in a moment. By the time you wrote the letter of the twentieth of July two thousand and twenty, you were aware of the number of the defects in the procedures that Anglicare had adopted, in addition to those to which you apologised in the letter. That's correct, isn't it?
I wasn't aware of a lot of those and what was happening in head office with our incidents and complaints investigations at that time.
Who wrote this letter?
I did.
Why didn't you trouble to check with head officers to what was going on and what gaps had been identified?
I agree, I should have and I regret that I didn't follow up.
Who do you report to? Let me start again. In July two thousand and twenty, who did you report to at Anglicare?
Our group manager.
Located where?
She manages all of the different regions within community aged and disability.
In Queensland?
In Queensland, yes.
Why didn't she write this letter?
I I can't answer that. I don't know.
Did she?
I couldn't refer to her.
Does she still hold that position today?
Yes, she does.
Why isn't she here? Why are you here, Honour?
Because I was the person who wrote the letter and the commission asked that I be the person to appear.
As the person to whom, was the person to whom you reported had any involvement in this case at all, to your honour?
Do you mean like at the moment preparing for the hearing or in two thousand and eighteen?
Well, let's start with two thousand and eighteen, then we'll go to two thousand and twenty and then we'll come to the hearing. Has that two thousand and eighteen?
So in two thousand and eighteen, yeah, she, so, sorry, our group manager was aware of the incident, yes.
So that in two thousand and twenty, she was also aware of the incident?
She was copied into the email requesting the outcome.
And she was aware at that time that there had been at least one review or possibly two conducted, that is, in two thousand and twenty, into the circumstances of this case and in particular gaps that might be identified?
Yeah, the review was of all of our incident management and complaints investigations. And I think that the group manager may have been aware.
What is the exact date of that review? And if you don't know, Miss Fraser might be able to tell us by identifying the document.
I don't know the exact date of the review.
Do you wait for the help, Miss Fraser?
I didn't get that, sorry.
I will just take a moment to attempt to source that, Chair.
And, Ms. Cummings, you've said that the Harm Prevention and Response for Adults with a Disability Procedure was a document that you were not familiar with in two thousand and eighteen, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
When did you first become aware that there was such a document?
When we were preparing my statement.
That is a document which on its face says the effective date is the thirty first of October two thousand and fifteen and there was a review date of the thirty first of October two thousand and seventeen. If you go to the document behind tab eleven, you will see that on page one.
Yes, yes.
How is it possible for someone in your position not to be aware of that procedure?
I probably should have been aware of that. I knew of the incident management. I was not aware of the harm and prevention.
Say that again. I'm sorry, I didn't quite.
Sorry. Yes, you would think that someone in my position would have been aware of that particular document. In searching for documents, it was difficult at that time. You had to have the name of, sorry, specific name of the document to find it on our system.
Have you ever raised, have you ever raised with senior management what the point of having a procedure would be, is, sorry, the point of a procedure is, if it's not distributed to staff who should be responsible or are responsible for implementing the procedure?
I haven't. I have alerts now that will send through any updates, documents or new documents.
What have you done to ensure that members of staff who are answerable or report to you or to people under you, what have you done to ensure that they are familiar with this procedure?
I have the coordinators as a level underneath me in my role as service manager and they have got the alerts where they receive updates for documents through email and policy updates. And then they need to be distributing that to the team leads or be aware of it in case it's ever required.
And what have you or Anglicare have done to ensure that the procedure is actually read and understood by everybody who may be responsible for giving effect to it?
Again, I rely on the service coordinators and the multidisciplinary team coordinator to ensure that they have read that. And I have learned that when we do have something happen, we will go and review the policy or the procedure.
I suppose you might think that the person to whom you reported to assumed that enough would be done to ensure that you had seen the procedure in two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty, yet apparently you hadn't.
I I can't, I can't answer that.
No. So can you just please assist me once again? Could you tell us exactly what you personally, because I understand you can't answer for those who, to whom you report. But what do you personally intend to do by way of an apology to Nikki and Nikki's parents for the failures of the systems which have been identified today and any other failures that may come along?
Okay, yeah, look. In this forum, I personally and on behalf of Anglicare, we acknowledge that what happened to Nikki and the impact on her and her family is devastating. And I would like to work with my group manager in formulating an apology and trying to meet with Nikki and her parents to discuss and apologise. It, we didn't manage it very well. We didn't have the policies and processes in place to support Nikki and her family and we regret that. That I carry that regret. And we also didn't engage openly as per our values of care, love, hope and humility. Sorry.
That's all right. Take your time, Ms. Cummings. If you want to have a break, that's okay.
No. And I know that Anglicare and me personally, I've learned from this. And I just want to offer my deepest apology to Nikki and her family for not fully engaging and supporting them as they require or needed. Sorry.
That's all right. I've got another question or two I want to ask you. So if you do want to take a break, that's perfectly all right. You prefer me to go on?
Yes, please.
All right. In your statement, question twenty two, has Anglicare provided any form of redress to Nikki with respect to the incident? If so, when, what, if not, why? And your answer was, to the best of my knowledge, no redress has been provided to Nikki and this has not been requested. What did you mean by saying this has not been requested?
The family hadn't approached us, which I realise it's something that we should approach them about.
Well, that was what I was going to ask you because if that is what you were conveying, and I just wanted to clear up the possible ambiguity, then it implies that somebody in your care who has suffered something which in your words is devastating, is expected to come to you to ask for redress rather than Anglicare taking the initiative and offering some form of redress. That's in fact what happens.
And that's not correct, not right.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll ask other commissioners.
Sorry, Chair. Sorry, Chair, just before we move to the other commissioners, you did ask whether there was any document that gave a particular date for the review that had been referred to. The document that I would best identify for you is the document at tab thirty, which is, has a date of eighth July two thousand and twenty and refers to, or the subject of which is NDIS audit feedback from participant interviews.
Yes, and that is a document I see. Tab thirty in my document is a one-page document.
That's the only document, sorry, Chair, that bears any or has any reference to a particular review date. That's the best that I could point you to.
So we don't have, as far as you're aware, the document that constituted the review?
That's correct.
I see. Commissioner Bennett, do you have any questions of Ms. Cummings?
Yes, Ms. Cummings, I'd like to just briefly discuss some of the information that you've provided in page twenty six and twenty seven of your statement. And this is particularly requesting that staff be mindful of relationships between clients. And it lists what staff need to do about monitoring, doing a risk assessment, informing parents. Have you got that in front of you?
Yes, I do.
We have heard over the last few days about how that people with disability are often not given adequate information or understanding about respectful relationships, about consent and choice and the right to make their own choices. Do you think that those strategies should also be staff talking with those people about what constitutes respectful relationships and consent and choice in having those relationships?
Absolutely. And I see it's not here, but we have a lifestyle lead at the Respite Centre in question does try to incorporate that into her programme of being, having yeah, respectful relationships and we need to work with the staff as well. So yes, absolutely.
Because at the moment it reads very much like action to be taken against a monitoring regime. And that, as I said, time and time again, that good information and education and support.
Yes.
Would you agree is a critical part of mitigation?
Yes, yes. And we, I didn't mean that to sound like that because I understand that everyone has the right to a relationship. Um, and it's, it's teaching people the, the best way to have, well, not the best, but you know, how to have a safe relationship, um boundaries, et cetera.
And you, and you say that does occur?
Um, our lifestyle lead has told me that she does try to work with those people there, the um participants at the Respite Centre, um what uh appropriate boundaries um in social behaviour.
And is there a professional way in which that information um has been developed that is accessible in various forms of communication?
No. So that's something that we will have to work on.
And drawing on the expertise of advocacy groups and people with disability? On how those conversations can be held and supported?
Yes, but that's an improvement that we can, we can have.
No further questions, Chair. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Seems to be a repetitive fault on my part. Commissioner Mason, do you have any questions for Miss Cumming?
Thank you, Chair, just a quick question, and thank you, Ms Cummings, for your evidence today. Uh, we refer to this document behind tab twelve, uh the Quality Indicators Report, August to October two thousand and eighteen. And the, uh, on page thirty-six, the incident was um identified as major in that table. Um, and just looking at pages further into the document, I'm not, I'm not quite sure if I've looked at the right page, but I was interested in um other categories which are minor, moderate, major and extreme. And I'd imagine uh moderate and minor and major would probably get categorised much more often than extreme. And my question is, uh, is Anglicare perhaps considering in re-looking at these categories, given your evidence today? Uh, because there's, there seems to be a gap between action and prioritising um against this category of major in relation to uh the assault, sexual assault. Just was interested in your view.
Yeah, I've had a um a recent discussion with our executive director. And yes, we will definitely be reviewing that.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Gelfrey, do you have any questions of Miss Cumming?
No, thank you um very much for your evidence. And just to follow up Commissioner Bennett's um question about primary prevention. Do you envisage undertaking a review to ensure that whether, whether there is a strong enough um emphasis on education and involvement? And, you know, the re- a review potentially with a, an organi- led by an organisation of people with disabilities who may be able to assist. I just wondered if you think the lifestyle um area for this is adequate?
Um, ye- yes, and that's been another discussion point that we will definitely be looking at a review and more robust education for staff to, to be across lifestyle and to prevent this from happening.
It wasn't the staff so much as the participants as well, that they'd be really involved um in this, so, yeah.
Yes, yes, and, and we are um across the organisation looking at more client participation in these teachings and learnings.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Mason. Uh, Mr Andrew Teeters, is that, I'm sorry, is that how, have I pronounced your name correctly? I hope I have.
You have, thank you very much, Chair.
Yes, do you have any, any application to make any questions of, uh, to Miss Cumming?
I do, if I could be given leave to ask Ms Cummings about two matters, or at least one.
And what would that matter be?
Uh, in relation to the questioning about whether or not Anglicare suggested to Nikki's family that Nikki see a doctor. And secondly, whether.
Go on.
My apologies.
No, go on.
Secondly, and secondly, uh, a hypothetical, assuming on the, on the, on the assumption that Nikki and her family were here, whether there's anything Miss Cumming would like to say to them.
Well, give you leave to ask the first question, um, I'll ask Miss Fraser, do you have anything to say about the second question? Uh, that Mr Andrew Teeters proposes to us?
Uh, Chair, it would be my um position that Ms Cumming has in fact already addressed that um in the responses that she has given to the commission today.
Mr Andrew Teeters, is there anything that the second question that you wish to ask that could add to what is transpired?
Other than perhaps the tense in which it was answered, uh, instead of it being prospective, what would she actually do right now? But, but I won't take it, I won't press for that, Chair.
I, yes, I think the answer to that, Mr Andrew Teeters, is for the matter to be taken away, given serious consideration and appropriate, appropriate steps taken. So I'll give you leave to ask the first question or first one or two questions arising out of the reference to, referral to a doctor. So go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. It's a document that's referred to in paragraph thirty-two of Ms Cummings' statement. Uh, operator, the doc ID is ASQ dot five zero zero six dot zero 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 one dot zero two zero nine. Thank you. Can you see that, Miss Cumming?
No, yes, I can now.
And do you recognise what that document is?
Yes, it's our um incident report.
And could I ask the operator to please go to dot zero two zero nine, which is the?
Ten twenty-nine.
No, is that the first page? Down the bottom of the page, please. Keep scrolling down for me. Yes, could you stop there? Uh, can you see the words service coordinator, then something's been struck out?
Can, can that be a bit larger for me, please? I can see service coordinator.
Could you read the rest to yourself? Could you read that sentence, please? Can you see it? Describe immediate action, service coordinator, then there's a black line.
Looking at the ro- sorry, I was looking at the wrong thing.
No, that was my fault, sorry.
Okay, yes.
Uh, can you, for the benefit of the commissioners, uh, just briefly explain what that is intended to be?
Um, the immediate action is, is what the staff who had the incident reported to them um took as a, as a response, the, the immediate response to the action.
And is it a, a record made when, do you know?
Oh, at the time of um adding the incident into the uh system. Um, if any, because immediate action should have been taken as soon as we knew about the incident. So that would be put into or entered into the incident at that time.
And does that note help you with your recollection as to?
It does.
It does? Thank you. I have no further questions, Commissioners.
Thank you. Uh, Miss Cumming, just arising out of that, I noticed that in that document in the left-hand column, it's referred to as elder abuse. Can we move that document back up? Why, why is it referred to as elder abuse?
Um. I wasn't there at the time when that was done, um, but I I, I, I would have to, I haven't, I can only surmise, so um I don't know. It's further education, yeah.
All right, thank you. Uh, I take it that now the council has an application to ask Miss Cumming any questions? Pause for a moment to confirm that that is the case. Thank you. In that case, uh, and Miss Fraser, I take it there's nothing else from you as far as Miss Cumming is concerned?
No, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Miss Cumming, for coming to the commission in order to give evidence today. We appreciate the assistance that you have given to the Royal Commission in your evidence. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Miss Fraser, um, we should now adjourn, I take it, until what time?
Till uh two PM Sydney and Hobart time, one PM Brisbane time, Chair.
Yes, thank you very much. Well, then we'll adjourn until that time, that is two PM Sydney-Hobart time and one PM Brisbane time. Thank you. The Royal Commission is adjourned. Yes, Miss Edson?
Uh, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioners. This afternoon, I'm very pleased that we have a panel of advocates and experts from Women with Disability Australia. Uh, our panel members have given their affirmations, and I'll briefly introduce them. So Caroline Fromada joins us, Molly Hermans joins us, and Tess Moody. Right, Chair, I just think you might not be, you're, okay, you're off mute.
Yes. Thank you. Um, Ms Fromada, Ms Moody, Ms Hermans, thank you very much indeed for coming to the Royal Commission in Hobart, even though in Sydney we can't actually see you on the screen at the moment, but I'm sure you will emerge very shortly. Um, we're also very grateful to uh WWDA for all of the very, very considerable assistance you've provided in the, assisting in the preparations for this hearing. We're very grateful for those contributions which it made for a very important hearing and a hearing that uh has covered a very large range of issues. So we want to thank you both for your attendance at this panel and also for everything you've done to assist the hearing uh that has been held this week in Hobart and in Brisbane. Yes, thank you. I still can't see the panels. I don't know if others are in the same position.
Well, I think we might just press on, and I hope, Chair, that, that you'll be able to see.
Now, now it's been remedied. Thank you very much. Now we can, at least I can see you. I hope everybody else can as well. Thank you.
I'd start by just making some introductory comments. So, Women with Disability Australia, I'm going to refer to as WIDA, if that's okay with you. Is a national disabled persons organisation, a DPO, and a National Women's Alliance member. And you represent girls, women, feminine identifying and non-binary people with all types of disability in Australia. The key purpose of WIDA is to promote and advance the human rights and freedoms of women, girls, feminine identifying and non-binary people with disability. WIDA uses the term women and girls with disability on this understanding that this term is inclusive of, supportive of women and girls with disability, along with feminine identifying and non-binary people with disability in Australia. WIDA's goal is to be a national voice for the rights of women and girls with disability and a national force to improve the safety, lives, life chances of women and girls with disability. You represent more than two million disabled women, girls, feminine identifying and non-binary people in Australia. You have affiliate organisations and networks of women with disability in most states and territories in Australia. And you're also internationally recognised for your global leadership in advancing the human rights of women and girls with disabilities. And as a DPO, WIDA is managed and run by women with disability for women and girls with disability. I hope that gives some, the Commissioners and those following this session, a sense of what you do and your reach. Now, I was going to start with some formal introductions, and it might be helpful for the Commissioners and those following to know from each of you a little bit about what your role is at WIDA. It doesn't have to be long. Ms Fromada, we have met you in public hearing seventeen point one back in October. And you and Linda Steele spoke to us about sexual violence, but really looking at issues concerning sexual and reproductive rights for women and girls with disability. So a warm welcome back to you. This time we're in person. I said to you, I can't promise that the fire alarm won't go off again, but you won't have to walk down sixteen flights of stairs that Dr Steele had to do mid-hearing and still managed to be on the line and engaged in giving evidence while that was happening. So um shall we use first names?
Yes, please.
So Caroline, over to you.
Um, uh, good afternoon, everyone. Um, thank you for having us. Uh, this is an extraordinary opportunity for us. Um, my, I have been the executive director of WIDA for nearly twenty-five years. Um, and so uh there was a, a lot of that twenty-five years where I was it. Um, had no staff. Um, now I feel a little bit spoiled because we have a few staff, which is fantastic. Yes, so that's my role.
Molly?
Yes, hello, thank you for having me as well. My name is Molly Hermans, and I am a policy and project officer at WIDA. So that means that I work across both some of our projects that are toted towards our members, including the WIDA Lead Project, as well as in our policy work, um particularly as a newly established and funded National Women's Alliance by the federal government.
Thank you, Tess.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Tess Moody. Um, I'm a fairly recent addition to WIDA, but feel like I've been here for ten years already because it just feels so wonderful to be part of the organisation. I'm also a policy and project officer, predominantly working on our disability Royal Commission work and engagement, but more recently pitching in and helping out with the Women's Alliance work.
Thank you. You wanted to start before we have the discussion to give an acknowledgement of country. Who would like to do that?
Molly? Yes, yes, um, so before we begin, WIDA would like to acknowledge the Murrinina peoples of the New Anani Nation of Trawana, which are WIDA, the traditional owners and custodians of Napolina, the land upon which we're meeting today. We pay our respects to the ancestors and the elders of this place, both past and present. And we also acknowledge and pay our respects to any First Nations people appearing at this hearing and to those who may be joining through the live stream. Violence against women with disability will never be fully addressed in this place without first reckoning with systemic racism and ongoing colonial oppression. WIDA will always stand in solidarity with First Nations women with disabilities. Today, every WIDA staff member providing evidence to the Royal Commission is also a victim survivor of gender-based violence. Like many of our colleagues who work in advocacy or the gender-based violence sector, we know that embedding our lived experience in prevention, early intervention, and responses to gender-based violence is vital to ensuring the principle of nothing about us without us. We acknowledge past advocates, activists and change makers who have come before us, including WIDA's founders, and those who continue to tirelessly work towards ensuring women, girls, feminine identifying and non-binary people with disabilities can live their lives free from violence. In acknowledgement of Trans Day of Visibility today, we draw particular attention to and celebrate the leadership of trans-disabled people and that leadership that they continue to demonstrate in our community. Finally, WIDA extends our respect to the many women, girls and gender diverse people with disability who have lost their lives as a result of violence and to those who continue to live with lifelong impairments as a direct result of the violence perpetrated against them. Sitting in front of me right now is a photo of my mum Julie. My mum was a victim survivor, having experienced multiple intersecting and ongoing forms of violence throughout her life in a range of settings, including hospitals and a disability group home. My mum was murdered by a healthcare system that decided her life as a disabled woman had no value. Those who perpetrated this violence took away her right to speak, as they do every day, to countless other women and girls with disability. The elders and mentors around me have always taught me to bring a human face to our advocacy and struggles for justice. Today, as we sit in what can often be a cold and clinical setting, let my mum Julie serve as that human face. Tess, Caroline and I are not alone as we sit here today at this bench because we carry with us my mum's memory and the memory of every other disabled victim survivor in here with us.
Thank you, Molly. Condolences for your loss. We've heard this week about the strength of mothers, grandmothers, sisters. And as Commissioner Mason said yesterday, that notion of sisterhood doesn't necessarily have to be the blood sisters, but it can be the unity that women bring to supporting each other. So, welcome Julie, and I'm very pleased your mum has joined you on the panel in spirit and that we also can see her. So thank you, Molly, for that. I want to start by asking you about WIDA's work and advocacy that's relevant to this hearing. Now, focus on this hearing is women and girls who experience violence and abuse in family, domestic settings and also sexual violence. WIDA's work extends into a wide range of areas touching on women and girls, but this hearing has got a particular focus. So Caroline, would you like to speak briefly about the history of WIDA's work advocating for the rights of women and girls with disability to be safe from all forms of violence?
Yes, thank you. I'm conscious that we don't have a lot of time. We have a lot of things to get through. So I wanted to speak somewhat briefly to this. I guess for those who don't know much about our organisation, we were formally incorporated in 1995 but operated as an unfunded network within a then national peak disability organisation. One of the reasons that our organisation came to be was because back in those times, the, most of the peak disability organisations were run by men and the issues that women with disability wanted to speak about were ignored and trivialised. So initially, we just started off as just a very small group of disabled women who came together to give each other support. And we have grown a very lot bigger since then. But even back then, the right to live free from all forms of violence and anti-sexual and reproductive rights were the two most pressing issues that women with disability wanted to speak about and wanted to be on the agenda. And unfortunately, things haven't really changed. It doesn't, so it doesn't matter how many times we ask our members to identify their priority issues. It doesn't matter the ways we ask the questions. How we ask questions, the right to live free from all forms of violence is always the priority issue. And sexual and reproductive rights and freedoms comes pretty close with that. I think it's outside the scope of this hearing to talk about all the work that WIDA has done over a very long time in this space. I think, you know, our organisation has undertaken research, published books. We have written more submissions than I would ever, ever be able to count, to governments, to, you know, regulatory bodies, to parliamentary inquiries. We've given evidence as witnesses to, you know, parliamentary and senate inquiries. We fought, actually, to be included in national advisory structures on disability rights and also on gender equality. And I think over the last three decades, we unapologetically forced our way into the mainstream women's movement and also to be better recognised within the disability rights movement as well. We have fought for over our history for, and we continue to fight for, basic recognition, rights and respect. So we're accredited with the United Nations. We have special consultative status, which means that we can actually engage and support the work of the United Nations in this space as well. We've undertaken a lot of critically acclaimed national projects and also international projects. We've won national awards for our work in preventing, working to prevent violence against women and girls with disability. We've provided a number of detailed, evidence-based, very rigorous submissions to this disability Royal Commission. And, and we'll be providing more. And I also need to say that we will also be providing submissions where there are no issues papers. And, and one that we are close to finalising is specifically on sexual and reproductive rights. So I think that it's critical that this Royal Commission, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that many of us and many who came before us have fought for over a long time, understands fundamentally that violence against us doesn't stop at the door. And this brings us to the scope of this hearing. Whilst I understand that the focus is on family domestic and sexual violence, there are some very important things we need to say upfront. So first of all, how do we define domestic settings? How do we define family? How do we define family violence in the context of women and girls with disability? So is a domestic setting understood as a house with a door? Is family understood as family of origin or family of choice? Is domestic and family violence understood to mean violence between essentially spousal and/or intimate partners?
Can I jump in there? Because that's a topic that I want to ask you about as we go on in looking at some of those definitions.
Exactly. So I'm going to skip through there because I've just about to say we're going to speak about that more. But I think I need to make it very clear that for many of us, our domestic setting can indeed be a typical home with a door. But it can also be a group home, a licensed or unlicensed boarding house, a hostel, a prison, a tent, a semi-supported accommodation facility, a respite centre, a healthcare facility, hospital, just to name a few. But it can also be the street. It can be a park bench. So I think that we we will talk later about the many forms of gender-based violence we experience. And so I hope that that gives a bit of a sense of how our organisation perceives family and domestic violence.
So very, we've got to take a broad approach and we have to really think about where women will be and where there is that risk in terms of sexual violence or family and domestic violence.
Yeah, and violence against women, girls, should never depend on where they live.
Yeah.
Ever. Violence against women and girls is violence against women and girls. And, and to put a hierarchy on forms of violence in the context of women and girls with disabilities is problematic.
But I want to turn to human rights and particularly drawing on international human rights conventions. As you're aware, the Royal Commission conducted its Public Hearing 18 and that was to examine how the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities, the CRPD, are applied in Australia, how is it implemented? And how important it is to have those human rights frameworks in our thinking around policy, development of laws and practice. So the CRPD does make reference to women and girls with disability. And there's also a general comment published by the committee. The Royal Commissioners have heard about the concept of cross-cutting articles in the CRPD, but your work is not limited to the CRPD. And you've shown that we need to look at a suite of human rights. When we're talking about women and girls, it's also drawing on the Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Discrimination Against Women, CDO, but also looking at other, what might be called the mainstream conventions. So the, you know, torture convention. Caroline, do you want to talk about yet?
Oh, good.
Yes. You can ask the questions today. We'll swap. But, but, but my question for you is taking a human rights approach here, how does WIDA incorporate a human rights approach into your work? But what should we be looking at when we think about analysing and thinking about policies and practices in Australia?
Okay, so when we talk about, well, first of all, as you know, Australia is a signatory to seven international human rights treaties and also has endorsed the Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples in 2009. Those, those international human rights treaties that we are a party to are not meant to be viewed in isolation. They're actually meant to be looked at and considered as a suite, a holistic package, if you like.
Sometimes the international law language is interdependent, interrelated and indivisible. So we hear that language in international law.
So then, and they're not mutually exclusive. So each one of these international human rights treaties that we are a signature to, a party to, each of them have obligations on Australia to, around reducing gender-based violence and also promoting disability rights. And so and the concluding observations that come from the monitoring of Australia's performance under those international human rights treaties that we're a party to, there is an expectation that they are to be implemented, so in, in the domestic setting. And so you know, it's like that, as I said, those recommendations are expected to be implemented. So I want to give just an example of, I know that this Royal Commission is framed essentially by the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disability and that's critically important. It is an international human rights, intersectional human rights treaty. But, for example, six out of the seven treaty monitoring bodies of the seven treaties that we're a signatory to for the last 18 years have made very clear and specific recommendations to us successive Australian governments about the need to enact national law to prohibit forced sterilisation. I could, you know, go on about that, but I won't. And so, so it's not just the CRPD. Of course, that monitoring body has made that recommendation many times. But the committee that oversees the Convention Against Torture, I'll just use the short term if that's all right, has made, again, very strong recommendations around this. And so it's not just about looking at the CRPD and what it says we need to improve on. It's about looking at the recommendations from all those international human rights treaties. Because, as I said, we have international human rights obligations under all of those seven. And hopefully soon, the Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples as well. Is that enough?
That is, yeah, that's fine. But I might ask Molly, because one of the issues is to understand multi-layered experiences or intersectionality. So I wanted to ask you about how does the human rights approach address intersectionality or multi-layered experience for women and girls with disability?
Yeah, I also don't want to get, I guess, too tied up in definitions, but I think it is worth defining intersectionality because it is quite a common term that's used in mainstream feminist movement and also increasingly in public policy. And I think that there isn't a consistent understanding of what intersectionality is. So I just wanted to kind of briefly, you know, give a little bit of context that intersectionality was theorised by a black scholar named Kimberley Crenshaw in 1989. Intersectionality grew out of black feminist voices who'd been making this analysis for decades, if not hundreds of years. And so it's a tool that's used to, I guess, reveal and transform the interconnectedness of the ways that power and oppression work for people. So I know that Crenshaw, when she first theorised intersectionality as a concept, said that intersectionality reveals the conceptual limitations of single-issue analyses. And as you can tell, that's very important for women and girls with disabilities because we're not only oppressed on the basis of our gender, but also on the basis of our disability. And for many of us too, on the basis of our race and many different other parts of our personhood. So, yeah, for women and girls with disabilities, intersectionality is really important because it serves to reveal the really grievous human rights violations that we're subjected to and that I'm sure we'll talk more about today. Not only on the basis of our gender, but on the basis of our disability. So it's a good tool, I guess, to understand how ableism and sexism aren't separate drivers of violence. They actually compounds one another. And so we often experience gendered ableist violence, which is a different form of violence than, say, men with disabilities would experience. And the importance of intersectionality as a conceptual framework is that I think it challenges the way that Australian law and public policy attempts to really neatly compartmentalise different forms of discrimination, like sexism and ableism, rather than recognising the really, the complex interplay between systems of oppression and power structures. So again, really critically, intersectional analysis serves to demonstrate compounding oppression for specific communities of women and girls with disabilities. For example, again, specific forms of violence that First Nations women with disabilities face in the colony, where First Nations women with disabilities are subjected to not only racism and ableism, but sexism as well. And that results in very specific forms of violence. So if we look at the context of forced sterilisation, if we look at how forced sterilisation has a very eugenicist history behind it and consider that in the context of Australia as a settler colony, I think intersectionality is a quite useful tool to understand that. But unfortunately, my states, including Australia, don't recognise or really adequately address at all intersectional discrimination and its aggravating or compounding effects within human rights implementation. So often equality and anti-discrimination laws and provisions categorise identity and require each protected characteristic and require each protected characteristic or each part of your identity or personhood to be dealt with in isolation. So this type of approach, I think, um we can all agree, is quite divorced from our own experiences as humans. I can't divorce my gender from my race, from my disability, from any of those aspects of myself. Um and, yeah, in some jurisdictions, for example, victims and survivors of discrimination and violence can only bring a complaint of discrimination with respect to one ground. Um because intersectional discrimination is not provided for in the law. So for decades, Widder has advocated for an intersectional human rights approach, um urging both the Commonwealth as well as state and territory governments to embed, and I mean embed intersectionality, not silo, not have one or two pages on intersectionality, but embed intersectionality within anti-discrimination law. Um and all, I guess, legislative implementation of UN human rights treaties and instruments Australia is a signatory to. Um because, as Carolyn touched on before, human rights treaties and instruments like the CRPD, like CEDOR, um like UNDRIP, they were never designed to be considered in isolation from one another. And they need to be viewed and implemented in tandem in order to fully protect um the rights of cohorts like women and girls with disabilities who, as we are aware, are frequently subjected to violence and abuse based on intersection of experiences of oppression. Um and women and girls with disabilities deserve the right to address um and prevent violence on the basis of these specific forms of violence, rather than um having to choose or prioritize one part of our identity over the other.
Okay. Tess, can I ask you that in the case of women and girls with disability who experience violence and abuse in their families or domestic settings, how does a human rights approach help us to understand the causes of violence and abuse? Do you want to take that question?
Yeah, sure. So before we talk about the causes or the drivers of violence, we need to really just place responsibility where it predominantly lays, um and that is with the perpetrator. It's a perpetrator's choice to use violence. Um when it comes down to the um the drivers, understanding these causes and drivers can improve the way that we identify risk and respond to violence. However, this doesn't lessen the abuser's responsibility for their choices. Um like Marley, Marley said, the main root cause of violence against women, whether they have a disability or not, is gender inequality. Um and gender equality is a fundamental human rights principle that underpins every major international human rights instrument. Um gender, gendered drivers, I won't go into too much depth, but the gendered drivers are mostly condoning of violence against women. The men's control of decision making and limiting women's independence in in life. Um the rigid gender stereotypes that we see um in society and the male peer relations and cultures of masculinity that emphasize aggression, dominance or control. And like what Marley said, in addition to gender inequality, for women with disability, ableism com- compounds this violence against women. But it's also a driver in itself, so it's interconnected, but also can be separate. Um recently, Our Watch released a resource called Changing the Landscape, um which Widder was part of um consulting and contributing to. And that really unpacks that combination of the ableist and the gendered um inequality drivers.
Tess, can I jump in there? That that document is available online.
It is.
Want to have a look at that, they can search that up.
It's on Our Watch's website. Um so ableist drivers are the negative stereotypes about people with disability, accepting or normalizing violence, disrespect and discrimination against people with disabilities, controlling their decision making, limiting their independence, and also social segregation and exclusion. So segregation in itself facilitates the use of violence, of abuse and exploitation as well. So gender inequality and ableism intersect um and compound to create this landscape in which women and girls with disability um have violence perpetrated against them. And in some cases, you know, it's lawful or encouraged. So like Carolyn said, in the case of sexual and reproductive violence, restrictive practices and guardianship orders. Um also, like Marley said, in addition to the gender drivers of um gender inequality and ableism, intersectionality, so that all intermeshes within that as well. Um the segregating setting, segregated settings like Carolyn said, such as group homes, hospitals, prisons, boarding houses, or um you know, settings on the street, which don't neatly fit into that definition of family or domestic violence or intimate partner violence. That also fosters the environment for the violence to occur. So in my opinion, that's a driver as well. We need to look more closely at the environment as a driver, not just a setting. Um often violence in segregated settings is behind closed doors and hidden. Um so the drivers of violence in those settings, I believe, still remains unaddressed and really quite neglected. Um when we're talking about human rights, so consistent with the recommendations from several of the human rights treaty monitoring bodies, our Australian Government and the State and Territories, um we think that that should, they should review, amend and repeal laws, policies um and practices that don't comply with the CRPD. Um I really think that we can never, you know, prevent specific forms of violence if the law is saying they're acceptable and we continue to have segregated settings that continues to drive that. Um the United Nations Conventions to which Australia is a signatory recognizes that women and girls with disabilities have the same rights, human rights and fundamental freedoms. And Article Six um in the UN Convention, the CRPD explicitly um states that. So overall, I think unless we address that combination of the gendered drivers, the ableist drivers, really embed the intersectional lens, like Marley said, not just have a two-page document in major frameworks um and address the drivers of violence in our lawful settings, then we're really neglecting to comply with human rights conventions. Um it's absolutely vital that human rights frameworks are embedded across all aspects of primary prevention. Um or I don't think we'll ever fully combat gender based violence for women and girls with disability.
Thank you. I'm going to have to keep an eye on the time because I don't want us to miss out on some of the things I know coming up that we need to talk about. But Marley, can I ask you about restrictive practices as a form of violence and abuse against women and girls in their family or their domestic settings?
Um, yeah, of course. So I guess, again, I want to come back to definitions. So I know the Royal Commission defines restrictive practices as any action, approach or intervention that has the effect of limiting the rights or freedom of movement of a person. Um and this is very similar to how the NDIS defines restrictive practices. Um however, um the way that Widder conceptualizes restrictive practices is a lot broader and extends to interventions that are exclusively or primarily perpetrated on women and girls with disability. Um so the type of restrictive practices that I'm talking about include non-consensual and coercive sterilization, menstrual suppression, um forced use of contraception and forced abortion. Um the forced removal of children, denial of support for sexual activity and denial of support for intimate relationships. Um I also want to be clear that we're also assuming um that restrictive practices include the non-consensual and coercive use of psychotropic medication. So even if this medication is prescribed by a medical practitioner for a diagnosed mental health condition, um we do know that um psychotropic medications are regularly used as restrictive practices to control the behaviour of women and girls with disability. Um, yeah, what, in whatever context, setting, reason for use, um you know, very strongly believe that restrictive practices are violent and are in violation of human rights. Um I think there are multiple conceptual levels on which restrictive practices should be understood as a form of violence. Um so on one level, on the, I guess, very interpersonal level, the use of restrictive practices is a form of interpersonal violence against women and girls with disability. Um because they're often non-consensual and they're coercive interventions perpetrated by an individual like a support worker onto another individual um that causes harm, takes away that person's autonomy, takes away that person's decision making. Um and often, yeah, causes long-term and ongoing trauma. Um but most importantly, restrictive practices need to be understood on the structural level. And I think this is what Widder has been advocating for a very long time, is that restrictive practices need to be understood as gendered ableist violence. Um and that understanding of ableism is really central to understanding restrictive practices. Um because, I want to be really clear, the use of restrictive practices, it's not just simply about stigma um or negative feeling towards people with disability. Um restrictive practices are part of a really larger project of maintaining um specific hierarchies between able-bodied people and disabled people. Um we know as well that the use of restrictive practices um is very severe and very commonplace in institutional and segregated settings. So coming back to that definition of family and domestic settings, that's why Widder thinks it's really important to be considering places like disability group homes, prisons, psychiatric wards, hospitals. Um because we know in these settings, restrictive practices are often used with ambivalence every single day for organisational reasons. Um restrictive practices are factored in to how, for instance, disability group homes work and operate. Um because they make it easier for support workers.
I jump in there because I think this links very closely to the question that I was going to ask Caroline next, which is Widder's view about closed settings and about the optional protocol on the Convention Against Torture, that the OPCAT, as it's called. And when we're talking about closed settings, you would look at group homes as a form of closed setting. What's Widder's view about OPCAT and uh whether you think that would make a difference for women and girls with disability in closed settings who experience violence and abuse?
Um absolutely. I think one of the first comments I'd make is about um the Australian Government's uh apathy towards um uh its uh obligations under OPCAT. Um the, we still have um, you know, OPCAT being a signature to OPCAT means that that it, that we we require what's called national preventive mechanisms. So at a at a Commonwealth federal level, but also by a state and territory um government to be established. OPCAT, um it is clear from the text of OPCAT, an Article Four One of the Convention Against Torture, that um that it's about um being able to uh visit, monitor, review uh any setting where someone is deprived of their liberty, as in can't leave. Now, unfortunately, um the uh the national preventive mechanism at a Commonwealth level, i- the coordinating point is the Commonwealth Ombudsman. Um and it is very regrettable that uh we still have some uh states and territories who are yet to uh even work out how their national preventive mechanism is going to operate. I'm not an expert on where everything is up to at the moment.
I think my question was really uh reflecting that you take a very broad approach and you encourage a broad approach in understanding domestic and family settings, but particularly domestic settings, as you've said at the beginning. And so if we look at these requirements of the OPCAT, which is the opportunity to go in and visit and see what's going on and respond to allegations.
It's meant to be a proactive process, not a reactive process. It's a very important safeguarding um process.
But you would like to see um the principles of OP CAT apply in Australia, but also have a gender lens to them. So that uh incidents of violence and abuse for women with disability in closed settings is going to be picked up, is that?
Yeah, absolutely. And it it is very um disappointing um to see that uh the uh Commonwealth Ombudsman, the national preventive mechanism um has, or the Australian Government, sorry, has um only uh agreed to um to allow OPCAT to operate in what's called primary places of detention, traditionally like prisons and um settings like that. Whereas from the consultation report and the Australian Human Rights uh Commission report released in two thousand and twenty, that was a result of widespread consultation on the implementation of OPCAT in Australia, it was very, very clear that disability settings um must be included, disability specific and mainstream settings where people with disability are often uh deprived of their liberty. So um and that is the position of the states and territories at the moment, who are um setting up there. So there there'll be no age care. Um so residential age care isn't included, group homes, um other forms of segregated enclosed settings. Um and uh I think that's really disappointing.
So you want to sort of see a broader view taken in terms of what the settings are to which the
Well, it is an obligation under the CRPD and it has been in Australia's two thousand and nineteen review under the CRPD, it was specifically mentioned. The other thing is that um I would like to say quite strongly is that um there is a national advisory uh group, that committee that is set up, has been set up to advise on the implementation of OPCAT in Australia. It is very regrettable that there is no disability representation at all on that advisory group. And again, um that's in breach of um, you know, uh Articles Four and Thirty-three of uh of the CRPD. So um that's a real problem because we have a right to be able to participate and be engaged in decisions um about our lives. And so even in those primary places of detention, there is overrepresentation of of people with disability anyway. So is is that, is that answered your question?
Certainly, it's answered my question. I want to move now to where there are gaps in legal protections for rights of women and girls with disability in Australian laws. And I I mentioned in opening on Monday, the work the Royal Commission's done with an issues paper on violence and abuse of people with disability at home, and we've recently published earlier in March, the responses. And Widder provided a submission to the Royal Commission in response to the issues paper. And you identified a lack of consistent legal definition of violence against women and girls in state and territory legislation. And that then led to a a varying degree of protection. We um spoke about this at the beginning of this public hearing back in October. And you might recall Jacoba Brush, the then president of the Law Council, spoke about those definitions. And Ms Ryan took us through the sort of hypothetical case of Lily, depending on where she lived, uh what her protections might be. So um I don't think we need to go back and sort of cover the same things that we did in October. But in terms of what Widder has been working on, I'm listening to women and girls with disability. Uh you've called for the development of national legislation on gender based violence against women. So Caroline, can I ask about that? But also at the same time, is where can we look to in terms of other countries that have got an appropriate and comprehensive definition of domestic and family violence that may be something the Royal Commission might want to consider in terms of uh different models? Can I, can I do those two questions in one?
I'll try.
Because I'm conscious of the time.
Okay. Um well, first of all, uh yes, we 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 have argued for a very long time about the development of national legislation on gender based violence. Because if you think about it, we have eight different um, you know, states and territories who define uh domestic family violence in different ways uh under, and again, I'm not um
I'm not asking you to be a lawyer on this. It's really just the importance of the protection.
So, um so the, um I mean, it is absurd when you think of it, that in Australia, you know, gender based violence perpetrated against women with a disability in Tasmania may be completely differently conceptualized in law in New South Wales. We have um inconsistent definitions. Uh we don't even have a national agreed definition of what constitutes gender based violence uh against women. And the reason um that I say that is because uh the forms of violence Uh, the forms of violence we experience um are excluded in law, in these acts many times. Um, and um, and we're just uh. And so why should somebody get a certain amount of protection in one state or territory, but not somewhere else?
Would you like to sort of see a national consistent definition?
Yes, and I think the other. Oh, sorry, I've done it again. I interrupted you. Sorry.
Uh, I'm gonna do protective interrupting so we can get to everything, but.
Now, in, um, we are a signatory to SEDO and in um two thousand and eighteen uh under Australians' Review. Uh, render compliance, SEDO has been calling for Australia to establish a national law on gender-based violence for a very long time. And um, and in two thousand and seventeen, the SEDO Committee published a general comment, a general recommendation thirty-five. Um, to uh, to update the thinking around uh violence against women. And have um given very clear authoritative guidance to states parties on what uh needs to happen and what we need to. So there are, um, so we need, we need a consistent national. National definition that incorporates us, that includes the forms of violence that we uh, that we experience. And uh at much higher risk of. So, um, I know you asked about other countries, so. Um, it is, uh, I wanted to point out just a couple of things. So the Istanbul Convention. Um, which is uh, some forty-five uh European uh countries are a signatory to that. Now, one of the things about the Istanbul Convention is that it does actually name up the things like forced sterilization. Um, you know, sexual slavery, um, other forms of uh, you know, gender-based violence. Um, the South African legislation, um, there were three new bills introduced uh only a couple of weeks ago. It's not only about the definition, it's about the implementation. So for example, the new law, uh, South African law. Um, has provision within it to, for example, to be able to apply for an apprehended violence order twenty-four hours a day online. Um, so it's not just the definitions. Um, and the other thing is that uh if we look at the United States um Violence Against Women. Uh, Reauthorization Act, that again was only signed off a couple of weeks ago. One of the things that, and I'm not saying it's perfect by any means, but one of the things that that does, um, is that it mandates things. So it mandates training of judges and, you know, people who work in all sorts of fields. It mandates uh, indignant American women's rights. It um, it mandates grants, programs. Um, and so uh it's a five-year um act, uh, but for those five years, it's. I mean, there's a lot of things in it that I think we could learn from. And again, I'm not saying it's great. The best one I would say is probably the Istanbul Convention.
So if we could look, look to some of the international conventions.
General recommendation thirty-five, SEDO, of which we're a signatory to. Um, clearly spells out what the definitions and updates the thinking around. What we mean by gender-based violence against women. And it includes things like our sexual and reproductive rights, it includes women with disability. It, so the definition's actually there. Um, and so, uh, um. Yeah, so, and, and I guess the other thing, and it might be, well, I also wanted to say that. How, um, having national legislation is also about leadership. It's about this country saying, this is what we agree is gender-based violence against women. And this is what we're gonna do about it. Um, it is ridiculous to think that we have eight different definitions and what constitutes a relationship and what constitutes. And then, um, we also have, uh, and then at the Commonwealth level, we've got a definition in the Family Law Act. And that's it.
So it's part of getting a national approach, but integrated in the sense that just sort of having a legal definition might not be enough. But how you support uh the protection of women, which is, as you said, training, awareness, funding. All of those elements that go into it.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna keep going. I've got to be tough on the time.
Sorry.
Um, one.
Too much.
One issue is that uh Widder's raised concerns about lawful forms of violence. And you know, Rosemary Kayes has also spoken to us about lawful violence. And the law sometimes is a tool of violence. This might arise in the context of guardianship, forced sterilization, and substituted decision-making. I think, as you know, we're planning on having a hearing later this year, looking specifically at the issues of guardianship. And substituted decision-making. Did you want to say something? I'm really gonna go briefly on, on that topic.
Because, and I'll answer as briefly as I can, because to be honest, we could do a whole hearing on that.
We, well, we are.
Not, I think so, um, not just, but you know, the lawful forms of violence.
Yeah.
Now, um, how is it okay? How is it okay that we live in a wealthy country like Australia? And it is still lawful to sterilize our young um girls with disability. And our adult women with disability without their full prior and informed consent. How is that okay?
And we did talk about that.
Yep, so that's why, so it's not just forced sterilization. How is it okay that in a wealthy country like Australia, we can forcibly um make. Women with disability and girls with disability take contraception. And often injectable contraceptives that in some other countries have been banned years ago. Um, how is it okay that we see our First Nations uh, um, women with disability? Um, indefinitely detained without con- without conviction. Um, how is it okay that women with disability don't, are allowed to have legal capacity? Um, so I could go on and on and on about this for an eternity, but it is Australia's shame. That um, to think that. Uh, as I said, it's seventeen years now that every one of those treaty monitoring bodies, including the Convention Against Torture. The Committee Against Torture has said, stop it. You cannot sterilize, stop the menstrual suppression, stop the forced contraception, stop the segregation. Until this country is prepared to address segregation. Seeing people with disabilities as other, um, then we will never ever stop this epidemic. That is violence and abuse against women and girls with disability. I'm sorry. Is that too, is that too much?
No.
Right.
Law is one thing, policies and strategies is another area. And uh, we've seen last year in December, the release of Australia's Disability Strategy. A draft national plan to end violence against women and girls to replace the current plan. Uh, Caroline and uh you might, if you want to share this with the others, it's up, up to you. But have the national policy approaches to address, addressing the experience of women and girls with disability. Being based on a shared understanding of what constitutes violence against women. I think based on what you said earlier, all of you are shaking your head. I think the answer that might be known.
For you, because, no. And how can they, when we can't even agree as a country on what it is? Um, so if we don't have nationally agreed definitions and, and conceptual understandings. How policy framework, and this is why national legislation is so important, because it's, it's the legislation that sets the scope. Of policy frameworks, that then set the scope of funding and service responses. And it's, it's that trickle-down stuff. So if we look at um, just things like um, uh. In the previous national plan, and I, I would say that we have worked very, very hard on the new draft. Of the National Plan to Reduce Violence Against Women and Children, but um that is not yet uh released or um.
Still in the drafting stage, isn't it? Yes.
But in terms of Australia's disability strategy, we did the same thing there. We were very upset that we weren't able to get a standalone outcome area. On safety and um safety from all forms of violence. And it is problematic that we still don't have ways of even measuring properly. Um, uh, you know, how can you measure something when you don't even have an understanding or an agreement on what it is? So, and the other thing I wanted to say is, um, it is from my experience, having been in this job twenty-five years. That um, that these policy frameworks um that you talk about. Um, have largely focused on intimate partner and spousal violence. And even if we look at things like perpetrator intervention programs. I, I defy anyone to find me a perpetrator intervention program that actually includes and focuses. On the perpetrators of the violence that we experience, or the other, sorry, the other forms of violence. So perpetrator intervention programs are largely focused on, you know, the intimate partner relationship. So we get excluded in many, in, in so many ways, um, because. Uh, it, it's not, it's not well-understood. The multiple forms of violence that we experience are not well-understood. Um, and so, yes, we, we're often excluded. So, and again, how can you have something, you know, national frameworks that aim to uh reduce. Um, you know, violence, gender-based violence against women, when you have laws that actually allow.
So, so sorts of issues of aligning the laws and policies together. But I, I think the clear message I'm understanding today is not to have narrow definitions. That then will exclude disability, uh, women with and girls with disability, because they're outside those sort of mainstream. Senses of what relationships are for family or domestic settings, is that right?
Yeah, and I think even something like um a forced and coerced marriage. Now typically in Australia, that's understood to occur in faith-based communities, when in fact, that is a big issue. Um, for some women with disability. Um, and so, but it's never. There's no research, there's no interest. Um, so we have so far to go and um. So, yeah, I hope that's answered your question a bit.
Definitely has. So I, you know, I've just got to look at our one table and say I'm gonna press on for another fifteen minutes or so. I think we've got a little bit of time, but I'll just check your guys', this is, just to let others know that we might go on a little more. Um, I want to come back to Molly and to Tess and turn our attention to the NDIS. And one of the issues which has come up for you in the work that you do. And the women and girls who you engage with is uh an effective gender strategy within the NDIS. And so there is a concern uh from Widder that there's not an effective gender strategy. Molly, do you want to take that question and um and tell us what the nature of the concern is and what needs to be done?
Yeah, of course. Um, I might be a little bit cheeky and actually say, not only is there not an effective gender strategy. There actually is no gender strategy at all.
Right.
So I want to make that very clear.
Starting point is a gender, a big, a gender strategy, and then secondly, you want it to be an effective strategy if it was there.
Exactly, exactly. So, you know, we know, I think, um, the most recent participation rates in the NDIS. And that are released by the NDIA. Um, it was thirty percent, uh, thirty-seven percent, sorry, of all participants were women and girls. Um, absolutely no doubt on the participation rates of trans or gender diverse people as well, which is important to point out. Um, and there are heaps of reasons for this. So we know that women and girls with disabilities are often socialized. And encouraged not to speak up for the support that we need, um, different diagnosis processes. So for instance, for women and girls um who are autistic, we know that they are way less likely to be diagnosed. Therefore, to be able to apply to the NDIS. Um, and then there are lots of different types of disabilities and chronic illnesses. That um predominantly women experience compared to rates and men. And these are the types of disabilities that the NDIS doesn't consider. Um, so all of these things kind of compound each other and um ultimately, you know, kind of enforce this gender inequity within the scheme.
So what would a, a gender strategy look like for the NDIS? Has Widder, uh, thought about that?
Yeah, so we have, we think about it every day. Um, so I think it's a gender strategy, um, it needs to include mechanisms to ensure that the processes. Um, to both access the NDIS as well as maintain funding. Um, they're accessible to women and girls with disability and that they are sensitive to the fact that many of us. Have experienced different forms of trauma. Um, so, you know, for many women with intellectual disabilities. Cognitive impairment, Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander women in particular, there's a really specific risk of trauma associated with. Telling, for instance, a local area coordinator your story. Um, so that needs to be part of an effective gender strategy for the NDIS. Um, and there also needs to be some really clear supports related to health. In particular reproductive and sexual health for women and girls with disability. Um, because too often, women and girls with disability were denied our right to sexual expression. Um, and were denied our right to bodily autonomy, based on really ableist attitudes about. Disabled women being either hypersexual or asexual. Um, and again, coming back to that human rights frame, the CLPD has said over and over again. That women and girls with disability have a right to access services equally to everybody else. Um, but unfortunately, that's not the case, because the NDIS has not prioritized a gender strategy. And hasn't seen it as important, which is really concerning, considering. The importance of implementing a really effective gender strategy to address things like gender-based violence.
Well, I think that we've got some representatives of the NDIA coming to give some evidence tomorrow. So that's a question I've asked them to think about, and we'll explore that with them tomorrow. Tess, can I ask you about what Widder has heard about screening processes for violence? In the NDIS and uh are there processes or assessments in place for support workers? Or even for NDIA staff, so that one might identify the issue. You were here in the hearing room when Nicole Lee spoke about this on Monday. Can I, uh, that's a huge topic.
It's huge, and I've cut down what I've written to her.
We just, um, I, I think in some senses, could I ask you? And I know you've got some notes there, but it's really what, having listened to Nicole Lee's evidence and what you've heard during the week. What needs to be done in terms of this screening process, in terms of, uh, Widder, Widder's obviously heard a lot. Of stories uh from women on this. What needs to be done on the screen?
Yeah, well, NDIS workers and staff, they're in prime positions to be able to identify. When women with disabilities are experiencing violence. But we don't believe that they're currently equipped to do this um effectively or properly. There are no, at the moment, substantial um screening processes or assessment tools. Um, in place for them to use to be able to detect that. Um, a standard question, you know, by an NDIS worker of, are you experiencing domestic or family violence? Might not be useful for women with disabilities because our experiences of violence are so broad, diverse, complex, and indifferent settings. Um, and those sort of questions might not identify the more hidden forms, like coercive control, uh, all the restrictive practices. Um, or um things like, you know, restricting food or neglecting care. Um, so we really think at Widder that it's important that there's a regular routine screening process um to detect this. Uh, whether that's during the application process, um, whether it's um during planning meetings. Or coordination of supports or service provision or plan review meetings. So at any stage in that NDIS um process. So we recommend the development and implementation of an NDIS Violence Assessment and Response Framework and or Toolkit. Um, and that would encompass what I think should look like, identify, respond and refer. So going across all the levels. Um, it can also, we, we feel strongly that if that framework and toolkit's going to be developed, it has to be with women with disabilities. So, you know, in co-design, they're not just making it for us and think that they know it's going to be okay. We scream about that all the time at Widder, don't make it for us, do it with us. Um, and that toolkit needs to have that intersectional lens as well. Um, when the development of the assessment toolkit is done. Uh, we feel that that should be made mandatory for NDIS workers and appropriate training, like comprehensive training. Not just an online module, you go through it, you know, one hour at the end of your day, um, something that's really comprehensive. Um, we also think that um, also along. also along with the, you know, the mandatory appropriate training is that we would like some consideration to be given to the establishment of a dedicated NDIS specialist disability gender-based violence assessment team who can do that as well. And overarching the toolkit and the assessment tool, like Marley said, we need the gender equity strategy that's, that's, yeah, overarching.
Again, that integration, that gender strategy would also identify what screening tools might need to be.
Absolutely. So that's part of the whole process. It just doesn't, the assessment and toolkit shouldn't just sit as a just a separate thing by itself. It needs to be addressed. The whole NDIS needs to have a gender lens.
And Marley, this fits into, I think, the question you were going to take, which is about the NDIS providing, or the NDIA probably providing accessible information and resources to women participants about violence. They can access assistance if and when required. What would you like to say about what needs to be done in terms of information and resources?
Yeah, so to date, to our knowledge, we haven't heard of anything being offered by the NDIS in regards to women participants about violence. And we would hope that this would be something that would be covered by a really effective NDIS gender strategy. Like Tess said, any type of accessible information and resources needs to be co-designed from the start with women and girls with disability and their representative organisations. And Widder actually had some incredibly useful, award-winning, groundbreaking resources on safety and violence, including our site, which is a website that people can visit that NDIS local area coordinators, for instance, could be promoting to their participants. There's also the 1-800 RESPECT SUNNY app, which is similarly co-designed by and for women and girls with disability. And these are the types of resources that speak to our community because of the types of resources that actually reflect our stories and reflect our experiences. And I think one final part of the puzzle here is not just creating these accessible resources and information, there needs to be better integration between the NDIS and specialist women's services because there needs to be really clear pathways for referrals. And, yeah, the responsibility there is on the NDIS to be creating those pathways and understanding that addressing violence experienced by women participants in the scheme, particularly from NDIS service providers, is the responsibility of the NDIS. And therefore, there is a responsibility to be able to not only give women with disabilities information on their rights on violence, but also to be able to effectively refer them on to those specialist services.
Thank you. Caroline, I was going to finish by asking you about the twenty-six recommendations in the, in Widder's submission to the Royal Commission's issues paper. If you're agreeable to the Royal Commission publishing that part of the paper, if we haven't already done so, those, they're very strong and integrated recommendations. So I'm just sort of mindful of the time that I'm not going to do justice to asking you about all of those recommendations today, but any final words from you and we'll make sure that we can share with your permission the recommendations that you've made. So any, any final words and then
Yes.
I can see the chair's giving me a look as if to move it on, but
I will be grateful.
We, we can see you very acutely, but I, but I'm conscious that the commissioners might have some questions that I pick up themes I haven't covered.
I guess, as a final comment, and that'd be great if you could make those recommendations available. I would like to say as a, as a final comment, I think, is that we can't, there's no such thing as a little bit of human rights. You can't cherry pick. You can't say, oh, we'll, we'll have that one, but not that one. As I said before, we have the, the framework in terms of the treaty, the treaties, the general comments, the recommendations, our concluding observations, all those sorts of things. And that provides the framework for us. You know, to have a holistic response. So I think it's, you know, we, just quickly, we want to see repeal of laws, we want, that enable lawful forms of violence. We need to see an end of segregation in all its forms and we need a transition plan. Not saying do it overnight. But, you know, we need that. And one thing that has, I would like to just quickly say, because it's come up in every hearing almost, is the critical role of independent advocacy. It is, you know, there is, it is under-resourced. The model's not great. The funding model's not great. And I think that that seems to have come through. I don't know if that's your impression, but it's certainly something that I think, you know, we really need to see much more focus on.
Could I, I will say commissioners may be aware that this hearing has taken us almost a year to prepare. We've had the stops and starts initially hoping to have this hearing in August, then October. And we start a little bit on October and we're finally here. We're indebted to Widder's advice and consultations with us along the way, suggestions for witnesses. And it's been a privilege to collaborate with you and for the assistance that you've given us to ensure that the rights of women and girls with disability who experience family and domestic violence can be heard, that we hear directly from women, but also for the support in bringing these threads together to help us understand what needs to happen in the areas of law and policy reform. And just reminding us of the importance of taking a strong human rights approach and how we do that. So I know that we could probably talk all day, but our discussions will continue not only in the hearing rooms but outside the hearing rooms. And I wanted to thank you all, particularly Tess, who's come to lots of meetings with us and we're really indebted to your support for the preparation of the hearing. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners.
I'll ask Commissioner Galvally whether you have any questions or any comment you wish to make to the panel today.
Look, I'd just like to start by thanking, thanking you very much. It's a really, it's so important that this hearing has become so central to us. So thank you so much for all your effort. The, I've got many questions, but in, there's so, so little time. And, but I did want to ask about the national policy instruments on the topic of violence against women and girls. And whether they include closed settings such as group homes, whether they're those mainstream policy, whether they're including closed settings too, because Tess, well, everyone really has identified them as being very important. So that's just one question. And, and whether you think it's possible to get that view in to them?
There you go. Well, obviously, we are represented on the National Advisory Group to develop the new National Plan to Reduce Violence Against Women and Their Children. And I would just like to say how hard we have worked. And it's not out yet. It's not. So, but, but I am very, very confident and hopeful that those closed settings and that you've talked about will be in there. Certainly, we have fought very, very hard.
Yeah. And can I ask just a quick one more? And that's about the whole issue of sexual rights especially. And I wonder whether you've got some thoughts about the, the greater risk to women and girls because sexual rights aren't part of the agreement in Australia because they're often denied. And somehow that puts women and girls at much greater risk. You know, the, and whether you've got any comment on that?
So Commissioner, are you talking about in the context of the national policy frameworks?
And just in general, that we've heard throughout this hearing and many other, and other hearings, how sexual rights are almost often, you know, right on the back burner if there at all. And then women and girls with disability become even more vulnerable because they're not addressed. And there's no attention given to that in terms of education, understanding, you know, anything to do with consent. Like everything's sort of, almost like, it's like a vacuum. And I just wondered about the connection of those two, you know, the denial of sexual rights for women and girls and then the much greater risk.
Yes, that's a very good point. And I think when I referred before to CEDO General Recommendation Thirty-Five published in two thousand and seventeen, it actually makes very explicit around the sexual and reproductive rights violations, including denial of access to education, to information, to sexual and reproductive health services, as well as the things that I talked about, forced sterilization, forced contraception, et cetera. And it goes even further than that. It actually says that those can actually amount to torture, cruel, inhumane punishment under certain circumstances. And so that's why I would be really hoping that the Commission would take, take a really close look at that general recommendation because it does give a more holistic definition, conceptual framework around what constitutes gender-based violence. And it does go to those things that you've just mentioned, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Galvally, thank you. Commissioner Mason, do you have any comments or questions?
Unlike Commissioner Galvally, I do have a lot of questions, but we ran out of time. But what I, what I am really pleased about is that Widder's given really incredible quality evidence today. And that First Nations leaders, particularly women, I mean, the development of the National Plan, in the work that is done with the Women's Alliances. It really sets a scene for important conversations. So this is not about any, anything to do with any surprises. Widder has already laid out a very clear clarion call for change. So I'll leave that there and I just want to say thank you, and particularly to Tess for your leadership. It's been really invaluable and timely. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bennett, do you have any questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you as well. And also I found your response to the paper and the twenty-six recommendations, and I'm glad that they're going to be available for others to see as well because it's important to get that information out. And just building on, Rhonda, as we've heard so many today, so many times today and yesterday, I think probably also from slightly older women than Marley, but about not knowing, not feeling they had rights in, in the sexual violence. And hopefully that, that can, the reforms can be made so that it doesn't go on to another generation. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me reiterate what Mrs. Eastman has said and endorse the comments about the contribution you have made to the preparation for the hearing and for this session. One of the things that has really been quite remarkable actually this week is the range of issues that have been addressed within the framework of domestic family and sexual violence. And clearly, the issues that have been addressed and the way they've been addressed owe a great deal to the contributions that Widder has made to the organisation of the hearings. And that, no doubt, will be the subject of comment later on as well. But thank you very much for that. And thank you very much for presenting your ideas so forcefully and clearly today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for everybody with a little extra time. As I said, we could probably spend a whole day in discussions, but our discussions will be ongoing. If we could have a short break, fifteen to twenty minutes. And then our evidence this afternoon will conclude with Nikita and the Yellow Lady Bugs.
Yes. Make a choice, Mrs. Eastman, fifteen or twenty?
I'm going to take twenty because I think everybody here in Hobart, Chair, we have had, we, we probably need a little cup of tea this afternoon, I think. So we'll take twenty minutes with your agreements. Thank you.
With my benign agreement. Yes, all right. Well, we'll come back at three forty-eight. Hobart time, two forty-eight Brisbane time. And no doubt, you'll take that into account in our last session.
No doubt I will. Thank you.
The Royal Commission is adjourned.
Let's get someone.
The Royal Commission is resumed. Yes, Mrs.?
Thank you, Chair. We turn now to the Yellow Lady Bugs. You can see on the screen in yellow is Katie Coolas, who is the founder and CEO of Yellow Lady Bugs. Katie has made her oaths and affirmations before coming on screen and so too has Nikita, and we'll hear from Nikita in a moment. So Katie, I've introduced you and you're going to give us some opening remarks. Thank you.
So just before you do, can I thank you for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence? You're giving evidence from Melbourne, as I understand it. Is that right? Is that right?
Correct.
Just to let you know where everybody is, it may have been explained to you, but Commissioner Galvally is also in Melbourne and you can see her on the screen. Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner Mason are in the Hobart hearing room and they're waving enthusiastically to you. And I am in the Sydney hearing room and I shall refrain from waving. But that tells us where we all are. So thank you again for coming to the Royal Commission. And please proceed with your opening statement.
Thank you. And I would like to thank the Disability Royal Commission for the opportunity to talk today on the experiences of autistic girls, women and gender diverse individuals with a particular focus on family, domestic and sexual violence. So thank you. So Mandela says, "Education is the most powerful weapon which we can use to change the world." And today I really do hope we can educate everyone listening through our stories. Stories that are sadly not particularly remarkable because they happen far too often. And by that, we hope we can start beginning to create change for our community. So Yellow Lady Bugs is an autistic-led, non-government charity with a strong mission to create opportunities for connection, learning and promotion of autistic pride for autistic girls, women and gender diverse individuals. We also have a really strong advocacy mission to address the many challenges, barriers and disadvantages we face, which is why today is so important. We are often the overlooked minority within the minority within the minority. And we have so many cross-intersectional layers of disadvantage, including LGBTQIA+, BIPOC, homelessness, poverty and violence. We are invisible as our disability is largely hidden. Being autistic and female gender diverse carries with it so many risks. A significant and known vulnerability for our community is being taken advantage of in relationships often due into our own adaption of social skills. Our often high ability to mask. It's sadly no surprise that as a result of this, we find our community is at much higher risk than the general population of experiencing abusive relationships. There are many complex layers to these stories and we are here today to give our community the voice and attention they deserve. Compounding this is living in a world not designed for us. We are the newer minority. So often the expectation is that we must learn to fit in, change who we are, mask our identity, act normal. This societal expectation is often reinforced by the intensive compliance-based therapy some autistic children receive in their early years, which goes on to have such an impact on how they experience the world as adults. It is generally known as ABA. This is the type of therapy that emphasizes compliance. And in doing so, it reduces the ability of autistic people to trust themselves. Compliance training, akin to grooming, is a gateway to being manipulated by adults to do as they tell you without question. It is safe to say that there is no corner of this Royal Commission where the specific vulnerabilities of autistic girls, women, and gender diverse individuals, or I guess it could be called our community, are not an important part of the conversation. But today, we will talk about some of the protective measures we think will help reduce our community's vulnerability to experiencing such violence. So I think it might be worth spending a bit of time to revisit what Yellow Lady Bugs means to our community and why we came about. Because by building a strong autistic network, where we help each other better understand our identity, where we connect with our peers, and we promote and develop pride, we believe that's an important area we need to focus on. We believe it's a shining example of a user-led organisation stepping up when the system has failed us for generations. And the importance of that system investing in user-led organisations such as Yellow Lady Bugs. It is dangerous to be an autistic woman who does not have access to her community, who feels alone, misunderstood, shamed, and not worthy. I want to share a quote that illustrates this point perfectly. "He beat the shit out of me, and nobody stopped him. I didn't report him to the police. And I didn't take myself to hospital, and I should have. But I didn't, because that's all I thought I was worth. That's what happens when you soak one child in shame and give permission to another to hate." That quote is from Hannah Gadsby, a Yellow Lady Bugs ambassador and autistic woman. Worth. It's such a powerful word. So let me tell you a little bit more about the Yellow Lady Bugs story and how it connects to worth. I remember back to the first event we ever held. I created this event together with my six-year-old daughter, just so she could meet other kids like her. Girls who were autistic, they were hard to find. She'd already be, been begun questioning her self-worth, feeling isolated and alone. And so she asked me to help her. Our first event, we had twenty autistic girls come along, some travelling as far as three hours away. That's how desperate they were to find their peers. And when I saw the parents watching their little lady bugs, all in their yellow t-shirts, wearing it with pride, playing and laughing together, I saw the parents have tears streaming down their face. I knew this was our calling. I knew we could make a real difference. And what I saw was the beginning of autistic pride, a beginning of belonging, a beginning of community, a safe place, an opportunity to educate against the many vulnerabilities and disadvantages they unfortunately most likely would face. And therefore I began to see the beginning of change. Since then, we have hosted thousands of lady bugs at events. We've evolved to online events, so we can reach every corner of Australia. And in the process, we've uncovered the most difficult stories we've heard. Autistic women and autistic gender diverse adults who have experienced such disadvantage. And this has helped us evolve our mission and widen our reach and our impact. We've also educated the very people that should already know that doctors, teachers, and professionals on what autism so often looks like in gender diverse and autistic females. We have provided a platform for education, and we've amplified autistic voices. What this story doesn't highlight is how grossly unprepared the system is at recognising the diverse presentation of autism within our community. My family, as well as thousands more, have experienced a disproportionate number of barriers to getting a diagnosis for autistic females and gender diverse individuals. And this is important, and it does link to the risk of violence. Because if you don't know who you are, you don't know how to protect yourself. Currently, there are no official consensus around the ratios, but I will say that one in four autism diagnoses in Australia is male to female. But a growing body of research and strong anecdotal evidence suggests the actual prevalence rates to be closer to one to one. In fact, a recent study pushed the ratio at four to three, and notes that eighty percent of females remain undiagnosed at the age of eighteen. We have been overlooked for many reasons, including prevailing stereotypes of what autism looks like, the gender bias of standard diagnostic tools, and the way girls are socialised and viewed in our society. More generally, we know that many autistic females and girls and gender diverse individuals are missed or having their needs invalidated because of their hidden presentation. So why is this important? Well, the impact of this oversight extends beyond access to diagnosis and exposes so many layers to vulnerabilities, including economic disadvantage, inequality in healthcare, especially in the realm of mental health, restricted access to education, and limited access to communities and their peers. Importantly for today, it exposes the specific vulnerabilities our community face in relation to violence in all its forms. There are so many more factors that contribute to our particular vulnerability. Grace Tame says, "Perpetrators typically target children with added vulnerabilities." These includes tenuous family circumstances, mental illness, self-esteem issues, prior trauma, and isolation. In Grace's case, she was fifteen and arexic, and we now know she was an undiagnosed autistic female. What we know from our community is that we find it difficult to identify when abuse is occurring. We may experience difficulty reading people's intentions. We have communication differences which put us at a disadvantage. We have limited access to, to peers, so getting advice is hard. When reporting, it can be difficult for those of us with alexithemia as we struggle to identify how we are feeling. We may have executive functioning challenges, so the logistics of navigating an already difficult reporting system is overwhelming. One of our members says, "I'm a thirty-year, thirty-three-year-old autistic woman who has faced violence in many forms throughout my life. Going through the process and getting involved in reporting was overwhelming for me. Even going to the police to report family violence is bad, let alone going to court, which is not set up at all to support my needs as an autistic woman." As I've said today, Yellow Lady Bugs is committed to changing the system. And there was, and we decided to have a survey to better understand our community. And the responses confirm just how broken the system is and how autistic girls and gender diverse individuals are currently being failed. Reading through the responses broke my heart. It made me sad, but it really did make me mad. We have to do better. So like I said, at the start of the year, we did put out a survey. We asked questions about domestic family and sexual violence. Structure of the survey was a mix of qualitative and quantitative responses. I must admit, we didn't have a lot of time to promote it, but we did get two hundred and thirty-five responses, which I think shows how important this is to our community. I will not have a chance to go through all the observations today. I will table that in our report, which lays out a very bleak future for our community unless things change. Our survey results did confirm that our community experienced a particular set of vulnerabilities that put them at a risk of becoming victims of violence and abuse. We are typically undiagnosed and late diagnosed, as I said, as I said, and have a lifetime experience of low self-esteem. And that's where we see people think there's something wrong with them. Seventy-five percent of our respondents have experienced physical violence. Seventy-six percent of our survey respondents have experienced sexual violence. And ninety-five percent of our respondents with physical or sexual violence was from someone we knew, someone we trusted. We know these results are not alone, and there's many more studies that painted a similar picture. In one overseas study, researchers found that autistic women had nearly three times the odds of having experienced sexual abuse compared to non-autistic women. While these statistics are shocking, it is the personal story shared by our survey respondents that deliver an even more powerful message. We have drawn on these stories and the recommendations we have developed. As you can see, autistic, this was one quote. "Autistic females need to be validated and recognised and supported to live an authentic, meaningful life. While our identity continues to not exist in the eyes of society, we continue to degrade and bury all of who we are. We become so empty and confused and traumatised that most of the time we don't even recognise if we are being mistreated by someone. Even if we do recognise the violence, we usually believe we're overacting because we've been told our entire lives to suck it up and stop being so sensitive." You can also see there's another quote on screen from another member, but there were so many ones similar to this. And that's what I mean about the overwhelming, consistent message that is coming across from our community. I'm going to finish up now, um, this part of the conversation and head over to our case study.
Thank you, Katie. It's, um, Kate Eastman here. I think commissioners will now, uh, ask Nikita. Nikita's prepared some words that she'd like to share with you. And, um, you may not see Nikita on the screen, but you'll hear from her. So Nikita, when you're ready, there's no rush.
"When the man enters the room, the girl looks up with a curious smile. Though if she knew his intentions, she would have run a country mile. He crosses the room, a strange look on his face, like a starved carnivore spotting some steak. It's true her short, short life had been far from ideal, but nothing could prepare her for the coming ordeal. The man snatches up the girl and stares at, tears at her clothes, hard hands bruising soft untouched flesh. Insistent moist lips press into her face while stale breath and whiskey leave her senses amiss. Her cry of fear is cut off with a blow. The ground rushes up. She lets out a moan. In confusion, she looks up at the one she should trust, but all she could see was his treacherous lust. The tears of the innocent stay in the ground, and the world becomes black as he covers her like a burial shroud. This is my earliest memory, being sexually assaulted around age four. Luckily, I dissociated for most of it, a clever trick our brain does to allow us to survive the unthinkable. I completely shut down afterwards, and was unable to tell anyone what happened. I do remember getting in trouble for destroying all of my dolls. The man had called me a little doll, and I knew they weren't safe, so I cut off all of their hair and drew it all over them with black markers. My parents are good people, but they had no, no idea what to do with this strange first child. I met none of my mum's expectations of what a daughter should be. I remember, remember being punished for things that I didn't understand, being forced to wear clothes that set off all of my sensory sensitivities, being smacked in my sleep for grinding my tea, being made to feel like whatever I did was not good, that I was never good enough, no matter what I, sorry. Being made to feel like I was never good enough, no matter how hard I tried to make them happy. When I was around ten years old, my dad's charismatic best friend assaulted me. He'd always been nice to me and gave me positive attention, something I severely lacked. So I thought nothing of it when he took me to the back of his property in the dead of night. There, he raped me. After he finished with me, he made it very clear that it was all my fault and that my parents would be very upset at me if they ever found out what I did. I had no, no one to turn to, so I suffered in silence. When I was thirteen, I was groomed by my thirty-year-old sporting coach. I was very lonely at the time, didn't fit in at home, and was bullied at school. He knew just how to take advantage of that. The relationship lasted until I was seventeen and followed a typical narcissistic abuse cycle. The abuse I faced became more intense and degrading over time, but I struggled to leave and had no one to turn to for help. Unfortunately, stories like mine are all too common amongst the autistic community. It's no wonder that so-called high-functioning autistic women are thirteen more times likely to suicide than the general population. Years of abuse, neglect, and having to mask constantly to be deemed socially acceptable takes a large toll. At the age seventeen and a half, I finally broke away from my long-term abuser and went on to have a seemingly successful life to those on the outside. But the truth is, I've only had one other intimate relationship since that time, and that too was abusive. Other than that, I've emotionally separated myself from the world, all in the name of self-preservation. I bounce between perfectionistic overachieving to not being able to achieve the most basic of life skills. I trust no one apart from my children and my very patient therapist, or most of the time. I'm very good at what I do professionally, but I face discrimination and bullying in the workforce on numerous occasions. Currently, I work with a very good team that is completely accepting of me and my quirks, but often that is not the case. I have resorted to substance abuse and other unhealthy coping mechanisms throughout my teens and a lot of my adulthood. My past traumas affect my ability to be the mother I want for my wonderful children. They are awesome. But sometimes trigger my trauma responses, leading me to react in ways that they don't deserve. I'm currently working hard to heal from my past traumas and learn how to cope more healthily as an autistic adult in your typical world. It's a long, slow, and often painful process, especially given my inability to trust people. I would like to think things have gotten better for people like me since I was a child, but I hear too many, from too many of my autistic peers that are still being mistreated. Personally, I have had to fight every step of the way to get my own autistic children's needs met, particularly in the education system. In year seven, our public school repeatedly threatened to keep my daughter out of the academic extension programme due to her inability to meet their minimum ninety percent attendance rule. This was despite her maintaining a B average, then knowing her diagnosis, and us getting letters of support regarding her anxiety from multiple medical practitioners. At the end of the day, we managed to keep her in the program, but the process almost broke me. In the last month alone, I've heard too many stories that make me want to rage and weep. A friend whose autistic daughter is so overwhelmed by the system, she has resorted to giving herself third-degree burns with aerosol spray. And despite that, her parents are still unable to find adequate medical or psychological help for the child. Another child was left mute for days, suffering from sunburn and heatstroke after being left in, lying in the sun at school all day. They'd shut down after being screened by the EA employed to help them. Things must get better. Too many people have been hurt and neglected, all for the crime of being neurodiverse. The string of letters I have accumulated after my name aren't the type that are admired by our society. But I'm still a person with rights, needs, and dreams. Nikita Williams, ASD, ADHD, CPDS-D, human being. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing your poem, sharing your experiences. We know this has been very difficult. And we greatly appreciate you having the courage to share with us.
Thank you.
You've also got some recommendations that you want to make, and the commissioners will have the opportunity to read the recommendations. Thank you, Nikita. And for anyone listening, I'll put up on the screen our content warnings and the telephone numbers. If anyone sees, wishes to seek assistance or speak to somebody, the numbers are available on the screen. Thank you again, Nikita. Katie, I think we're coming back to you.
Yes.
Nikita, um, may stay on and listen in the background. So commissioners, you'll have an opportunity to thank both Katie and Nikita shortly. So Katie, uh, as you know, uh, we've seen the results of the survey, which shows some quite startling statistics in relation to the experience of women and girls living with autism and their, what they report in the survey of both physical abuse, but also sexual abuse. of both physical abuse, but also sexual abuse. The survey has been important in the work that you do to advocate for people living with autism, particularly experience of girls. Can I ask you about the importance of the advocacy work that you're doing? Do you want to talk about that topic now?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much for that. Yes, and thank you, Nikita, for sharing your story. I'm very grateful to all the autistic individuals who have contributed to that submission, and it was very powerful. So thank you. The advocacy work we are doing covers the lifespan of our community, and as we dig deeper, it is getting more and more evident that it's generational trauma that we are seeing because of so many unmet needs amongst our community. We have, like I said earlier, layers of vulnerability, but also a minority within a minority and a minority, and it's really taking the impact and it's formed some of the recommendations we have got for you today, which I'd like to talk to about this particular inquiry.
Do you want to speak to those recommendations now?
Yeah, I've got three recommendations I'd like to bring up, and the rest we will table.
Thank you.
So the first recommendation we've got is that we do need to see commitment to fund, develop and deliver a wide range of preventative education programs and resources for our community, specifically as a protective measure against our particular vulnerability to family, domestic and sexual violence. These programs need to be co-designed by the autistic community throughout every phase of their development and their delivery. And programs need to be covering topics such as safety, consent, healthy boundaries, healthy relationships, coercive control, understanding the different types of abuse. And I do have one of our survey respondents that gave a quote on this topic saying, given we are vulnerable in the first place, preventative safety education is paramount, and given we are often not identified as children, it is important to offer this educate to our community and make it autistic friendly. So more education and support, helping our community recognise toxic relationships, give them the support they need to leave toxic situations is critical. Our second recommendation again is preventative, but I know I spoke from the heart when I talked about Yellow Lady Bugs and what it means to help us feel worthy and recognise our autistic identity, but we think that we need to fund peer support programs and events that enable social connections for autistic girls, women and gender diverse individuals. We identify this as a key protective measure, reducing their experiences of isolation and loneliness and the vulnerabilities to abuse that come with these experiences. And again, I've got another quote from one of our respondents saying, going to a Yellow Lady Bugs event has been a lifesaver, literally. I did not want my daughter to experience the same lonely, isolated life I did as an autistic woman. She has developed friendships, a sense of pride in her autistic identity, and this is the biggest protective factor, I believe, which can cancel out all those vulnerabilities she may have experienced down the road. And the third recommendation we've got is further research, combining lived and professional experience is needed to understand any link or risk between compliance-based autism therapies, including ABA, which can set autistic children up for a future of manipulation, exploitation and abuse. And this is a quote from the Therapist Neurodiversity Collective. The purpose of pairing is for the ABA provider to associate, by a pair, themselves with activities and objects that the child enjoys developing a relationship with them. The crucial difference between therapeutic rapport building and pairing is this. During pairing, the ABA provider uses their relationship with the child to later increase the child's willingness to comply with demands that they find aversive. Grooming and pairing essentially one and the same. Growth processes are intended to develop a relationship that an adult then leverages to encourage a formerly unwilling participant to do something that they may not have originally felt comfortable consenting to. So that is, I've taken from a third-party source, but I do have another direct quote from an autistic woman who was a previous ABA therapist named Inappropriate Possum. ABA therapy has resulted in teens who comply with the demands of any authority figure. In short, we are allowing our children to mature into easy prey for predators by acquiescing to their submission to a compliance reward structure that can be perverted and abused to harm them. We are so caught up in extinguishing behaviours in our offspring that we erase their ability to say no or defend themselves. This system of autism behavioural management doesn't teach recognising and avoiding predators, bullies and abusive people, and it has to change. So in conclusion, all the recommendations and protective measures in the world will not be effective unless society addresses the issue directly with the perpetrators. We are here today talking to the lived experience of autistic females and gender diverse people, but we cannot ignore that, as Victoria's Police Assistant Commissioner Luke Cornelius has previously stated, violence against women is absolutely immense behaviour. So we need to shift the narrative away from the focus on victims and ensure this is a justice in a system that sadly has many times in the past served in favour of male perpetrators. But let me first, let me finish up by bringing it back to our lady bugs. We, and for those listening at home, we do not deserve to be invisible anymore. We do not deserve to be overlooked. We do not deserve to be ashamed of who we are. We do not deserve to be isolated. So we urge you to listen. We urge you to make real, substantial, practical changes. Our lives might just depend on it. Thank you so much for listening today, and I'm available to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Katie. The commissioners may have some questions for you.
Yes, thank you very much. I shall start with Commissioner Mason. Do you have any questions you would like to put to Katie or any comments?
No, I don't have any questions, but I would like to thank you for the evidence that you've provided today, as well as Nikita. It's been really excellent and wonderful that the voices of women and girls has come through, right through the evidence you gave today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Bennett, is there anything that you would like to ask?
I'd also like to say thank you, Katie, to you and Nikita, and particularly your ability to draw on your own experience and other women and girls and think about changes that need to be made and the suggestions that you've made to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Gilbert?
Yes, I'd like to add my thanks to Katie and Nikita and ask a quick question about peer support and how incredibly valuable and important it is, but also as protection against risk. And just wondered if you could expand on that. That was, that was really important, I think.
Thank you. Yeah, so we heard in some of the stories that with people talking about their experiences, isolation and not having peers to get advice from or just generally feel like you've got a community around you is powerful. But then on top of that, when you're in a world that's not designed for you, you do feel like you're the outcast, you're the odd one out, and it affects your worthiness. And as we heard in Hannah Gatsby's quote, even if you are then in a position of being abused, you might not feel worthy enough to report it. So having that ability to connect with people that understand you and like you is incredible because you start beginning to build pride, pride about who you are and know who your community is. We've seen it in other amazing revolutions such as the LGBTQIA+ community, and this is where the autistic community is really starting to recognise how important it is that we unite and we connect with each other, and we know that we aren't the outcasts, we're just the minority, and when you provide that, that social connection, you are protecting the future generations, I mean, the current, but the future generations to empower them to know that they're worthy, to know that they're they're different, they're not less, and this is what we need to do. We need to connect our community. And the fact is, autistic, gender diverse and girls are particularly at risk of this because we're hidden and we're isolated, and it's hard to find our peers. So this is why Yellow Lady Bugs is so important, because when I first found out my daughter was autistic, everywhere I went, it was just autistic males and boys, and this is the point, we're creating a world where now we're connecting it and there's demand globally, but we just can't keep up. There is just this need out there and we, we deserve it. We deserve to feel connected and that will protect us. And very important. So thanks for the question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Katie. Thank you also, Nikita, for, to both of you for the thought, the care you put into your presentation. We know it's not necessarily easy to do that in an environment such as this. We very much appreciate your contributions to the hearing this week. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Eastman, does that mean we adjourn until tomorrow at ten AM?
I just want to tender some material from Libby Crawford's evidence and the Nikki case study, so if I can attend to that and then we can adjourn until ten o'clock tomorrow. So could you take into evidence the video recording of Elizabeth Crawford? And also the transcript of the video recording with Elizabeth Crawford? And mark those two items exhibit seventeen point twenty-six point one and seventeen point twenty-six point two.
Yes, that can be done. The video recording and the transcript of the video recording of Elizabeth Crawford will be admitted into evidence and they will be given the margins into trade and bonus.
Then in terms of what we'll describe as the Nikki case study, could you receive into evidence the following items? The video recording of Nikki and Nikki's mum and the transcript of the video recording of Nikki and Nikki's mum. And mark those items exhibit seventeen point twenty-seven point one and seventeen point twenty-seven point two.
Yes, the video recording and the transcript of the video recording of Nikki and Nikki's mum will be admitted into evidence and given those margins.
Then the statement of Caroline Cumming, dated the eighteenth of February twenty twenty-two, if you could receive that statement into evidence and mark it seventeen point twenty-eight point one.
Yes, the statement of Miss Cumming will be admitted into evidence and given the margin of seventeen point twenty-eight point one.
And Chair, there are some additional documents with respect to the Nikki case study as the commissioners and parties with leave to appear will be aware of tender bundle D. What we propose to do in the directions that the commissioners will make tomorrow is to make provision for discussions to occur about what additional documents need to be tendered following the oral evidence today. So it's just Miss Cumming's statement at the present time, and then we can deal with the balance of the tenders at a later date, if that's convenient to the commissioners.
Yes, thank you very much. And that perhaps should include consideration of whether the report that was proposed to an evidence in two thousand and twenty might be included in the bundle because apparently it's not presently.
I think I said tender bundle D, but I meant to say tender bundle B, so I apologise for that. Transcript can be corrected accordingly. Commissioners, that concludes the evidence for today. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you again to all of the witnesses who have given evidence today. We'll resume at ten o'clock tomorrow. Hope I have time and nine o'clock for this. Thank you very much. The Royal Commission is adjourned.